Okay, welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Please silence cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. Any private party that's recording this hearing, please step up to the podium to request permission. And I'll introduce the board and the staff. On my far right is Mark Fineran, a voting member. Next down, we have Scott Peterson, a voting member. Then we have Frank Duffy, the clerk. Last week, I called him Mr. Clerk. I'm Suzanne Murphy, the chair. Next to me is James Morse, the vice chair. And to his left is Tony Perucci, associate. And we have Nick Haney, associate. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on this application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representatives will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but their time may be extended by the vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. And four, next, the public will be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and will be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It'll amplify your voice and record audio for the FCTV viewers. And we also have a time if anyone wants to comment on anything, a public comment, but nothing that's on our agenda because we won't be addressing it. So if anyone has a public comment, they're welcome to come up. Anybody? No takers. So first at bat, we have Rudenhauer, the continuation.
Okay, this is the public notice. This is application 8924, John L. Rudenhauer Jr. of East Falmouth, Massachusetts. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240 6.6b of the code of Falmouth for a third garage bay. Subject property is located at 276 Central Avenue, East Falmouth. The property is in an RB zoning district. Again, it's a special permit under section 240 6.6b for a third garage bay. You're allowed two, but you have to have a special permit for a third. Current use of the property is a single-family dwelling. The lot is 21,596 square feet in a district that currently requires 40,000. Street frontage is 119.98 feet where 100 is required, so that conforms. Central Avenue is a public right-of-way. Lot coverage by structure currently is 18.8 percent. It will be increased to 20 percent by the third garage bay in a district which allows 20 percent. Lot coverage by structure, paving, and parking is currently 36.3 percent. It will increase to 38 percent in a district where 40 percent is permitted. There are no noted nonconformities with the existing dwelling. We have comments from Board of Health. They say they have no comments except that the garage must remain unfinished and uninhabitable. And the engineering department has informed us that the property may need a driveway permit. They can ask us to consider stormwater runoff and erosion and sediment control.
You're at bat?
Sure. So you pretty much covered it all. It's easy. So yeah, the space, we're adding a third garage bay because we have too much junk.
Sir, would you just identify yourself? I'm sorry, Madam Chairman.
Yeah, just like you said, I'm John Rudenhauer, the homeowner and I guess GC for in the garage at 276 Central Avenue, East Falmouth. Yeah, we're adding, looking at a third garage bay because we have too much junk. It's going to match the existing home. It's going to look as if it was there when it was built, so it's an extension of the And yeah, they will have space above just to match the same roof line of what's there. That space above will remain unfinished as per the notes and by the design. The coverages are as stated, right? So staying under the allotted amounts or the intended amounts. There were more notes actually from DPW than just the driveway permit. There was the driveway permit notes, which since receiving those notes, a driveway permit has been filed and paid for and approved, so that's all done. And then DPW had additional notes because there were additional, the driveway's gravel. There was additional gravel along the right-of-way on Central Ave. It was all gravel. I have pictures of that. Well, I have pictures of it no longer gravel. You can see here where it's all grass. So they had notes saying that that was, you shouldn't have parking there despite what other folks may be doing on this road. And so, you know, I had that done and I also filed the permit for that. And that permit's been inspected and closed and we're all set there. So that works all done. So it's this, you can see on either side, that's either side of the driveway. So those permits are all filed. Previously, when I was here, there was poorly, unprofessionally staked, there were driveway like snow markers. So I paid to have the engineering company, and this man has a vest. He's very official. And he put in the markers, the oak ones and everything, and they're as they should be. So that was done. And yeah, I really, I mean, just, we can go over the elevations. The elevations aren't changing. And the setbacks, one thing that wasn't mentioned there was setbacks, right? So it's staying well within the setback, you know, by zoning or by whatever the rules are there. So the setbacks are going to be, frontage, we're not even close, we're over 50 feet. Side of the property line, we can be within 10. It's going to be 22-plus feet away. And then the rear property line, it's over 100 feet away from that. So should be no issue there. That's it.
You're all set?
Yeah.
Anybody have any? Mark, you want to start off? I think you've got any questions?
I have nothing.
Scott?
Oh, nice addition to, how's your junking?
Yeah, I'm off the junk.
Frank, you all set?
I'm all set.
I am also. Jim?
No opposition in the file.
None that I saw.
Only question. Thank you.
Tony?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Nick?
Welcome.
Should we go to the public? We're all set to go to the public? Anybody from the public want to comment on this? Wow. Look at us stopping off good.
Fine.
All right.
Motion closed.
Second.
We have a motion to close in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Scott?
Doesn't look like we have any discussion, so motion to approve with conditions.
There you go.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? Shall we do findings, Frank?
We'll do findings. Under section 240 6.6b of the zoning bylaw, you need a special permit for a third garage bay if the property is 30,000 square feet or less. This property is 21,596 square feet, so it is subject to the special permit requirement of the zoning bylaw. As for the special permit, we make the determination that the site is adequate for the proposed use. The site is suitable for the proposed use. There's no apparent impact on traffic flow or safety. There does not appear to be any impacts on neighborhood visual character views or vistas. The sewage disposal remains the same. Utilities remain the same. There's no impact on affordable housing. There's no evidence that the third garage bay will create a nuisance under 240 section 13.1 of the zoning bylaw. And a landscape plan is not required because it's a single-family dwelling.
Want to add anything to that, Jim?
No opposition, I think.
We did receive a referral from DPW concerning a driveway permit, the applicant to testify that the permit's been filed. Additional feedback concerning gravel encroachment onto the public way. Applicant provided photographs indicating that that issue has been dealt with.
Driveway permit?
Yeah, driveway permit was applied for. Setbacks of the project are all conforming with existing requirements. That's the only additions I got.
20, 20 feet? 20.5? Did you do the height?
22.4 from the side.
22.4?
50.6 from the front and 105 point, make it up from the rear.
Okay.
Oh, and the addition will not increase ridge height of the existing structure?
Right.
Any other findings? Noreen, you have anything? Conditions?
Plans?
For plans? Work hours? All departments? You'll need the driveway permit approved. You said that wasn't approved?
No, it's approved.
It is approved?
Yeah, it's all done.
Addition to remain unfinished and uninhabitable?
Yeah. I was thinking of further structures. I'm trying to see, is that 38? So probably no further structures?
Yeah, so where you'll be at the maximum lot coverage as a right, if you want to add anything beyond that, you just have to...
Yeah.
Shed, anything.
Well, it's already shed, but can't go larger.
Some people have...
He's got a place to put his stuff now.
Yeah, my wife kicks me out all, I don't know. Is that inhabiting? I don't know.
You don't need a tent permit.
Yeah, so and if you decide to finish the space above the garage in the future, you probably will need permission if they decide it meets the definition of a bed?
Yeah, there's no intention for that, but understood.
Any other further ones? All set? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. Nick Marioni representing the applicant, 85 Brick Hill LLC. I'm also here with the engineer for the site, Tim Santos from Merrill Engineering. Since the last time we were here, we addressed a lot of the engineering changes that were under peer review comments. We think we've got them all except for a few that the peer review is referring, deferring to the board and other departments like the Board of Health on. We also submitted a lighting plan and nitrogen calculations. So I don't see the town's peer review engineer here. Is he coming, Noreen? No. Okay, so we think we've come a long way in addressing the issues that were brought up, and I was hoping he would be here to confirm or discuss that with us, but...
Can you put up the light, the lighting for me? I don't think I have a copy of that.
I might. I have so much stuff, but...
This one's generated a lot of papers.
So this shows, this shows street lights and it shows the area that each light covers. And then it also shows rear building lights and the areas that they cover, so that none of it spills off the site.
And there's still been no photometric of this?
This is what's called a photometric plan.
That's what you're calling?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, photometric evaluation, not for construction, but it's a photometric evaluation plan.
And it does lighting from the homes, too?
Yes, lighting on the back of the buildings, yes.
Yeah, I don't think I have...
The front of the buildings are in soffits.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could you walk us through the nitrogen information also, please?
Yeah. Well, I'll have to have Tim walk you through the nitrogen thing. That's...
Because I didn't, I didn't see that.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Good evening. For the record, Tim Santos from Merrill Engineering, representing the applicant. This is a traditional nitrogen loading calculation spreadsheet for the proposed conditions. This is a sheet that was used when my former company permitted the Cape Club up in North Falmouth. We went through a rigorous review by the Cape Card Commission and DEP for ground water discharge permit. So what it shows is the design flows.
Is it possible to have it a little larger? It's very small.
Three dots up in the top right-hand corner.
Okay, thank you.
Does that...
Yeah, I can see that now.
Everybody?
I'm sorry. It's draining my eyes to read it before.
Understand. So it's a nitrogen loading spreadsheet. Basically, what we're doing was we're entering different calculations within the spreadsheet. Design flow from the site, total design flow for the site was 6,820 gallons per day with a traditional Title V nitrogen concentration of 35 milligrams per liter. These numbers that you see here are lawn calculations for pounds of nitrogen and then runoff from roofs, pavement, et cetera. To, over here to the right, is the total square footage of lawn, roofs, pavement, and the natural area. Total site's 4.3 acres. So basically, what you're looking for and what you asked was the total nitrogen loading in kilograms per year. If you run these formulas through, the total comes to 349 kilograms per nitrogen per year. And the actual concentration of the site at the property line would be 20.2 milligrams per liter. So 349 was the number that you were requesting us to calculate for the total kilograms per nitrogen per year, and the concentration of the site would be 20.2 milligrams per liter. And that's with a traditional Title V septic system.
And you are leaving room?
There is room to add a denitrification system if it's required.
Anybody have any questions on this sheet itself?
Yes.
Go ahead, Tony.
I don't know what it means. And so, and I'm not being funny. I don't relate this to, for instance, what would it be, what should it be? I mean, we're going from zero to this. And is this where it should be? And if it should be at this, is this less than it would normally be? Where is the gauge? What's the measurement? We're not measuring it against something. We're just saying, this is the load, which is what we asked. But what is it we're trying to, what are we measuring it against? I know we're going from zero to...
I don't have that answer for you. You'd have to talk with your consultant. You'd have to talk with the town. I can provide you an answer for the load that's on the site that we're proposing. Obviously, we're going from a vacant site to hopefully a proposed site, and this is the actual number with a Title V septic system.
And Madam Chair, through you, we, our engineer hasn't seen this up here.
I haven't heard a specific comment about this.
It was submitted with all of the plans that would, for our last review.
Is it there?
We did address it. Can we look at it?
Hey, I got it right here.
Almost the last page.
What page is it on?
Second to the last at the top.
What's the date on that one?
November 11. It might start on the page before. Yeah, the page is numbered. Page eight. It is numbered.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for doing that. I really appreciate that. I don't know what it means because we don't have an engineer telling us what that is. Will we, will we have an engineer do that?
It's just drainage. This is just drainage.
That's just drainage, yeah. Will we be having an engineer telling us what that means to us in the coastal pond overlay district? Because we're being asked to waive it. And I mean, I'd like to know what right do we have to waive it? Is it going to be harm to the area because of it? If there's not going to be any harm to it, we just, you know, why not just waive it? That's the only thing I'm trying to get to. If there's harm, well, how do we mitigate it? Theoretically, mitigate it with an IA system. Am I correct on that? Am I saying something I shouldn't be saying on that?
I think the question I'd like to answer, Madam Chairman, is, were these numbers done in terms of the nitrogen load if this was an IA system servicing this development?
I did not do those numbers. Obviously, intuitively, if I'm using 19 milligrams per liter versus 35, it's going to be less.
So the question is, is this going to be okay for the coastal pond overlay district as it relates to whatever it has to be related to? Because this is just one piece of it. You did exactly what we asked. Thank you very much for that. But I'm not sure what that means. I'm not sure, does that mean we should waive it? Or we should ask for something else or not waive it? I don't know what that means. So I guess I would love to have a professional, an engineer, tell me what this is or isn't. What does this mean?
Right. I guess the problem here, though, is that obviously there's a large percentage of the town that's in a coastal pond overlay. And within those coastal pond overlays are existing dwellings, right? That all, many of them have traditional Title V systems that are contributing nitrogen, right? So I don't know how they would compare sort of what everybody else is doing contrasted with this because I don't know if we really know the answer to where this fits within everything else.
So the question is, you have to ask the question, why should this board waive it? That's the only thing I'm trying to get to, is why should this board waive?
Question, I, along that line, for you, Madam Chairman, would be, I think, maybe asking, yeah, the wastewater super of the Board of Health to weigh in, and is this going to affect applications for watershed permits? So if they have a suggestion as to whether or not we want to waive it or not.
Thank you.
That's what I think.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that feasible to have Amy review this?
I think that makes sense. Yeah, I almost don't know whether Beals and Thomas looked at this because as you look at their November 11 letter, they're also saying that they didn't see the photometric plan.
Right.
So perhaps they have also not looked at this current nitrogen information. But yeah, I think it would be helpful to ask the water super.
I do.
Wastewater super, I'm sorry.
Yes, Noreen, from a process perspective, when is Beals and Thomas going to be back in front of us on this application?
Whenever you request. So I didn't, I don't ask them to come unless you specifically want them to come.
So right now, the task is to have the town evaluate this and give us some response.
I certainly can.
It's not up to me. I mean, it's up to the board.
No, I think it's a great idea.
And it would make more sense to do it before we decide to ask Beals and Thomas, I would think.
Yeah. We're going to do that. So we'll get some information.
Do you have the Beals and Thomas document with you handy?
You have it, Tim.
I don't know. How do you want to proceed? I guess I don't want to jump ahead of anybody.
No, you can, if you have questions, if you wrote down questions, that's what I have. I have a few questions in here, but you can start off, Scott.
Well, I guess on item seven, we're talking about a single hydrant. Yet in the application documents, it has that the town is requesting two fire hydrants. And so are there two in the development?
There's only one in the development, and I was under the impression that both fire and the water department reviewed it and did not ask for an additional fire hydrant. If that's different...
Oh, Beals and Thomas was saying that maybe...
I believe if you look at your referrals...
I'm looking at the fire department. It says, due to the existence, due to the distance from the existing hydrant on Brick Hill Road, one additional fire hydrant will be required. So you had the one, but Beals and Thomas was saying...
I think they were saying that the fire department and the water department should review it. And if they thought an additional one was needed, they're suggesting it.
Okay.
If the water and fire department are requiring it, I'm sure the applicant would be more than happy to put it in.
I agree with your statement. On item eight, where it talks about prohibiting wastewater soil absorption systems below the driveway, portion of the septic system will be below the parking areas. So why is that happening?
I don't think the code prohibits it. It's allowed everywhere, and there's many, I'm going to say thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands of systems in this town that are below pavement.
And you're looking to continue your snow storage area in that area, too?
That's a grassed area. You know, whether it's snow storage or whether it's rain, it's, I don't see an issue with it. It happens everywhere in everyone's house.
Again, just looking at, did you look at Beals and Thomas comments below?
Yes, I did.
And it says, where snow melt on top of a septic system designed to infiltrate water does not appear to be best practice.
I don't, as an engineer, I don't see an issue with it.
Okay, well, I guess we'll wait and see what they come back with.
I think that's more of a Board of Health question. Maybe we could talk that through with the Board of Health and see what they have to say. They're going to be reviewing the plans as well. And if we had to, we can move the snow storages around, so maybe there's not as much in that area.
I guess it might be, unfortunately, Nick, if you could come back up on item 16, landscape plan, what's the...
No, the landscape plan, what we did on previous projects is we wait till the end when we see where buffering is going to go as we, as it develops with the abutis, and then we put it all on at once. So what we're showing here is just basically a concept showing that these are where buildings are, we'll need to put fencing or work with people on shrubs, whatever we need to do to buffer.
And you've been having those discussions?
We know we have to submit a final landscape plan with the scheduled plantings and everything at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have, we don't have that copy in the file. Is that just some...
This one right here?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure you do. It should have been submitted as a preliminary landscape plan with the file, but I can send it to you tomorrow morning.
Do you have a date on that?
It's dated February 1st, '24.
Hmm, I see.
Can I ask a question on this, Scott?
Sure.
Is the green that's on the perimeter on other people's property?
Some of it probably is, sure.
Some of it probably is?
Yeah, I mean, we're just, it's just, it's just to show, it's really an illustrative plan to give you a picture of how the buildings lay out on the site. And then as we meet with the abutis, we can see, they can see where we are in proximity to them so that we can talk about buffering. You know, where we need shrubs, where we need, we may want to put a fence, especially if there's headlights going in someone's yard, there's a cars pull in. These are the things we try to determine at this point, and then it ends up in a final landscape plan.
But those ones in the interior are all definitely going to happen?
On the interior, those trees, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And foundation shrub, we'll come up with a, just like what we did on Acropescic, a typical foundation planting plan, and then a specific tree and other shrub evergreen planting plans for buffering.
So, yeah.
The picture I have shows shrubs in front of the buildings and stuff.
It, again, illustrative picture, just to give you an impression. The final landscape plan will show everything with specified calipers of the plant, size of plants, number of plants.
Okay. All right. Tony, you have a question on this, on the landscaping?
I just want to make sure I understand. When will you have the scheduled landscape plan done? That's going to be for us. I mean, I think we're going to want to see that.
Oh, of course.
And so you will do whatever deliberations you'll do with everybody and...
Yeah, I can do, I can do most of it now. I can have it for the next meeting. Unfortunately, we may have to change a few things, but...
No, my, the only reason I ask a question is because I just want to make sure that it came, we saw it, as a scheduled plan, that's all. Size of plant, type of plant, all of that. Okay, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
How are you going to have it for the next meeting? How are you gonna have it for the next meeting? Are you gonna meet with all the neighbors?
I've met with, and I've reached out to anybody that wants to talk to me, I'm happy to talk to them. So I have a pretty good idea.
So they told you how many trees?
I have a pretty good idea of what I need to do.
Okay.
And if anybody has something specific, and also, before a tree is cut on the perimeter of the site, we will mark it out with caution tape or something, say, "This is the limit of clearing." We'll meet with the abutters again and negotiate any tree that could be saved possibly, or have a real good reason why it can't be.
Okay.
Could you speak to item twenty-one in Beals and Thomas, where, again, with the abutters had issues on runoff, and we're talking about the areas behind buildings A and B. Fortunately, there's words in here where runoff appears to be less, and then partially addressed. So I just, again, are there new calculations that you and Beals and Thomas have all worked through? I think that the abutters would want to feel a little bit better about the analysis, if you could walk us through.
Yeah, not a problem, I'll just, hold on one second. So I believe you're talking about these two buildings right here, Mr. Peterson. So, yeah, so the previous plan, I believe, showed the grading just coming right down to the property line, so the abutters were, I'm assuming, concerned with runoff coming down the slope onto their property. So we've revised the grading here to propose a grading drainage swale that comes down the property line, collects all of the runoff, and enters a system here as well as, as well as into our main system here. The calculations were revised, they were submitted to Beals and Thomas for them to review.
Where's Candace Way in, no, excuse me, not Candace, uh...
Sophia.
Sophie, in relation to that, because that's where there's a, that's to the west, and that's where there's a serious runoff problem with floods out into the road. We had someone here who spoke of it before, and I'm kind of familiar with it. And, you know, I mean, it's not coming from your property, but it's going on to your property, so I guess it makes it your problem.
So you're saying runoff from the street above to the west?
Yeah, it's pretty obvious, you've been up that street, you know exactly what I'm talking about.
So we've provided, you know, drainage calculations and drainage exhibit plans that the, your consulting engineer has reviewed, so any type of runoff that comes onto our property, we are mitigating for to go into our drainage system down the bottom.
But it just appears here that he questions that.
I, I think what he was questioning...
Because that's definitely the west.
What he was questioning initially was the, the slope from building A and B not being mitigated for going offsite. And so what we've done is we've provided the proposed drainage swale to collect that runoff so that it does not go offsite to the east. That was the discussion we had with Mr. Cole.
So that was, again, I forget who has the document, but that was in item twenty-one?
That's item twenty-one.
Correct. So if you could step back to their response for item twenty, they're saying post-development condition is inconsistent with modeling?
So that's a typo. So there's a number on the report that doesn't match the number in the actual calculations, it's just, it's just a straight typo.
So you guys...
That'll be, that'll be, we can address that, and I think what he's saying, we're requesting this inconsistency be clarified for the administrative records.
Correct.
Just so the two numbers match up.
Okay. Because, again, we want to make sure that the abutters are not being burdened by any of the water that's on this parcel of lands. Okay, that's, that's all I had, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Before you end, may I just, how did you resolve that? How are we going to be sure that's gonna happen? What are we tasking, tasking them to do? To have our engineer come?
I get Beals and Thomas, that I thought that was...
Just have Beals and Thomas respond?
Sign off on all of these components.
Yeah, okay, that's good, thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
Has there been a flow test for the Fire Department yet?
Yeah, the flow test was done back in January or February, the results were submitted to Water and Fire.
Because he indicates that he hasn't seen one.
It was done long before we filed for this project, but we did it because we didn't want to see if we, we had to see if we needed to design a booster pump into it. And Eastern Electronics, the company that did the flow test, automatically submits it to them, so. I can email the board the results of that, too, but it's like reading the other calculations there, it's hard to follow.
Well, maybe we can just ask Fire to reaffirm if they've already, you know, when we ask about the hydrant.
Okay, should I do that through Noreen?
Sure. Yeah. Anybody else have any other questions up here?
Mr. Marioni, could you put the, part of the plot plan that shows there appears to be a shed encroaching on the, into your bounds? What you're doing, I recall testimony from an abutter at a previous hearing that essentially making a claim of adverse possession, we're not the land court, and I'm not asking for a, but have you received any demand or any legal process that this project could suddenly be subject to a lawsuit in land court?
I haven't received it yet, but I've been contacted by the attorney for the abutters saying that they were going to file a claim for adverse possession.
So it seems that you would have two buildings that would be significantly affected if the lot line was suddenly adjusted. If that's the case, what, what's the plan going to be? Are you gonna have to relocate those buildings? Are you going to reduce the size and scope of the project? I'm just, I don't want to get into an approval if suddenly this is gonna have to be completely redone.
Well, I don't think we'd get to that point. We're, we're pretty confident that we will prevail in the case of adverse possession. It would affect this building, building four.
Okay.
Worst-case scenario, scenario, should I be wrong, we lose, we can't build that building.
Thank you.
And all the other affordable units would remain the same?
I don't follow what you're saying.
Well, there'd be a lesser total.
Well, no, it'd be the same, same number of affordable units, so...
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, so that'd be your loss.
It would be our loss.
Yeah.
We'd have, we'd have thirty-eight units instead of forty.
Anybody else, any further questions for you, or the public? Are you good down there, Scott?
Yes, thank you.
Mark, you okay?
I'm good for the moment, anyway.
Frank?
Yeah, I think everybody else has asked questions that I have on my list, so I'm...
They beat you, they beat you to it.
Pays to be last, sometimes.
So we'll go to the public, you guys ready? Come on up.
Hi.
Hello.
Here in LeBlanc, thirty-three Sophie Lane, since you brought the shed. I sent your emails a while ago of the civil engineering plan, and filed for today, I don't know what the answer is. And we went to the courts, they have all documentation, but they have possession pictures from twenty-three years ago.
Speak at the podium, please. Thank you.
They have all documentation pictures, we have the evidence, the shed from twenty-three years ago, the land's been maintained for twenty-seven years, all that has been documented and has been filed with the court system today. So, that's it.
We don't know the timetable on that.
We don't know the timetable.
Slow, slow.
We know that much, right.
But the evidence is all in place, pictures and everything.
Okay.
Big signs.
Now, this is our copy to keep?
Yes.
Okay.
But this is clearly the risk that developer's taking.
Yep.
And we have no position on the merits of that lawsuit.
No, I agree with Mr. Duffy, but site control is a prerequisite applying one of these, so.
Neil Gary, seventy-seven Brick Hill. And I appreciate the, the changes to the drainage, and where they've collected all the water coming off of Sophie Lane, and all the water collecting off of the two big Munster apartment buildings that they're putting on the east side of the complex. And they drain swaled behind the, buildings A and B, and they're gonna take all of the drainage coming off of Sophie Lane onto that three-plus acres, and all the drainage coming off of everywhere else there, and they're gonna park it right in the collection point right next to my property. And I understand, I don't, I don't have the engineering degree, I don't underst, you know, but I'm not gonna argue it, I just want to know what recourse do I have after all this is built and my property's getting flooded?
That's a good question.
Don't look at me.
Well, I'm just saying, that's because, I'm just saying, you're taking, right now we have a moderate if issue with water collection coming off the street, coming off of adjacent properties, and we bought into that, we understand that, that's what we deal with. But we're gonna take three-plus acres of drainage and all of Sophie Lane, and then collect it all, put it into a nice speedy catch basin and drainage swales and everything else, and park it right next to my property. And then I'm gonna have a bigger issue in the future, and I say, I'm not an engineer, I didn't design the system, I've worked on septic systems pretty much most of my adult life. I understand how water loads work, so when this doesn't work, and the water's bubbling over the, the property line and flooding my property, I'd just like to know what recourse that we have.
Maybe we can ask the engineer to address that. Can you show on here where your property is located?
Yeah, if I can figure out how this thing works, yeah.
He's right next door.
No, I want him to show the engineer, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Right there.
Eh, di-di-di-di.
Doing pretty good.
Oh, I can usually eventually figure it all out. Nope, not this one.
Just so we can have a ballpark of where you, where you're located.
I'm getting there, okay, here it is. But they had a better one with a better picture of the drainage here.
There you go.
See, this is a rather large block right here?
Mm-hmm.
That's my new garage that they built four years ago. The drainage area is all right here.
Where's your septic system?
My septic system is right about here. But it's all downhill, this, this whole thing right here drains to here. So you end up with, even in a heavy rain right now, we'll end up with a puddle right here, coming mostly off of the road and some from the undeveloped property. So if you take all this four-and-a-half acres, plus Sophie Lane, because we just discussed that one, and then we're gonna put it all into a nice speedy drainage swale, and we're gonna park it all right here.
And the thing is...
And that's uphill, that's uphill right now from here.
And just because there's no standing water in that area, you can't see underground in it, doesn't mean that it's not affecting your septic system.
Well, no, there isn't. Like I say, I know, I know that, but I'm just saying, it, right now, it's, it's functional. We have some issues just from road runoff and whatever else is coming in there in real heavy rain events, and you want to concentrate four acres of water and speedily rush it and park it right in that corner. And I know I can't argue it, I don't have the degrees or the, the engineering background to argue with you on whether that's gonna take it, but when it does overflow and flood after the fact, what I, what recourse do I have? Because I'm not gonna be able to, you know, three years, four years, five years down the road, be able to pull up an attorney and sue this mess to try to get recourse for a lot now that's flooded.
Can you address that for us? Thank you.
What I can address is the calculations and the design, what I cannot address is recourse, that's a legal matter, so if you have specific questions on the design of the calculations...
Well, it does slope down.
It definitely slopes down. It's designed in accordance with the state guidelines and standards, it's been submitted to you, it's been reviewed by your peer review consultant, and we've met the standards.
Now, yes, I, I mean, I do have a background in engineering about a hundred years ago, but, um, the state standards, are they like groundwater at the top? I mean, you're talking about it affecting his septic system that is operating and functioning, you know, ten, twelve feet below the surface? I mean, there a difference that we're not quantifying here? I could, I can understand, you know, him being ill at ease.
I, I understand his concerns, too, and I'm not lessening them, I'm just saying that that's not really an engineer's answer to, like, answer that specific question, it's more of a, a legal-type question that I personally think an attorney should answer, not an engineer.
Yeah, well, how, how much is built into this? You know what I mean? Is it, is it right to the number, or is there an extra twenty percent or, or something? I mean...
I would have to look at the actual calculations, but it's, it's designed to meet a certain code and standard, and that's what our calculations and designs show. If you're looking to say that, is there an extra twenty percent, thirty percent, five percent leaching proposed, I can look at it to get you that answer, but I don't have that answer right now.
No, it's not a, you don't have a, like, a customary margin of error that you're calculating in?
It's a, it's a program where you enter, you know, the square footage of the roofs...
Yeah, there's no thought process, it's all done in the...
It's a, it's a program, HydroCAD. It's used by every engineer firm in the world.
Just to confirm for the testimony, it's, that's run with a hundred-year storm?
It's run with a hundred-year storms, we run the two-ten, twenty-five, fifty, and hundred-year storm, and we have to contain a hundred-year storm on-site, that's a requirement. Thank you.
Frank, go ahead.
So if you, if we were to put a condition on this permit, assuming we were granted to Santos, that there be no runoff beyond the property line, do you feel that your client could comply with that?
That's a, that's a requirement by the stormwater standards.
But does that also, in my mind, there's two kinds of encroachment here, there's surface water runoff, but also you may have the groundwater, or the ground saturated and it's moving, and suddenly his backyard is a sponge, you can't see the water, but you can feel it.
So it, it's designed in accordance with design standards, we test the soils, soils are allowed to saturate so much runoff, and that's how everything's sized.
So he's allowed to saturate someone else's property?
Well, it, it's not saturating someone else's property, that's, that's not what I'm saying.
Tell me again what you're saying, then.
So, so we're collecting all the runoff from the roads, from the lawn, from the roofs...
Four acres, yeah.
Collecting it into the collection system, and goes into a grass-lined swale detention basin for treatment, and then it goes subsurface into underground leaching structures. And that's where it infiltrates into the ground, into the sandy soils.
How far below the ground are those structures?
So the bottom of that structure is elevation nineteen.
Nineteen.
But one of the comments, I think, in the Beals and Thomas report that I read, is it, there's, hasn't been any determination of actually where the, what's the level of groundwater?
So we...
Or is there enough separation here between this project, this, this system and groundwater so that you're not gonna have the mixing of the two?
Yes, so I, I did provide a comment to Beals and Thomas as part of our additional information. What we look at, so we did do test pits in this area, we went down to elevation seventeen at the bottom of the test pit, so there's about a two-foot separation. They would like to confirm that it's deeper, because we're using an estimated elevation of eight. So there's a map that we use, that I've used for many years at my former firm, in this area, and I can submit that for the record. In this area, it's around elevation eight, or estimated high groundwater table. We have no problem with a condition being put into the, you know, the approval, if you were to approve this, that, that, we need to provide that information to your board for the record or for the files with an excavation deeper in that area. But that map's been used many times by myself and former employees for over twenty-seven years, and it's pretty... it's pretty accurate. When we're in an area where we would have to dig another 20 feet down to find the groundwater table, so you're talking about an excavation of about 40 feet, 40 feet deep. It just doesn't really make sense when we have groundwater maps, estimated groundwater maps.
Perhaps Beals and Thomas could give us a comment on this subject too.
That's what they listed, yeah, to your point, Frank.
If you look at 21.
Cut the tail end of 19, yeah. So I guess, Noreen, from a process, where's Beals and Thomas? When are they going to come to help us to...
The next hearing, I think.
Yeah, we can certainly invite them to come back.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I have a question for Nick. Well, you can probably answer it. The snow storage is the kids' play area, right?
I believe some of it was in that area, correct.
That's what I...
Yes, the snow storage area is the kids' play area. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Are you all set? Come on back up. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Before he goes there.
I'm not arguing the absorption of the ground, which is basically Cape Cod's a big sandbar anyway, so you got a pretty good water absorption, but the problem is it perks up just as fast as it goes down. What my concern is, is that you're taking all of that plus Sophie Lane and putting it right there. So you're taking your 100-year storm, which would be dissipated over four-plus acres, and you're going to take that 100-year storm off of four acres and park it right there. So that's the concern I have. I don't, like I say, if it was just individual, you know, three or four individual houses, they're going to absorb it. It does not, you don't have enough land left there. So you're starting to park snow on top of the playground, and you've got pavement and roof structures, and then they added the additional drainage behind the two big studio apartment buildings, and then you ran them down in there too. So now you're just increasing not only the speed of the water flow, but you're decreasing the absorption rate of the rest of the four acres and just parking it all right next to my property. That's all. And then when it all goes through, five years from now, and I have to sit there and look, and I'm, like you say, I'm sitting on a big sponge, what's my recourse, other than my property's worthless?
Go ahead, Tony. Sorry to cut you off.
No, 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 no. We have, and no matter who's concerned, who lives there, he sees this happening. We have an engineer, our peer, the peer engineer says, indicates that there is potentially an issue. Now, we've just agreed that we were going to have the peer engineer come back to the next meeting. Are we going to ask our peer engineer to resolve this question, or is it going to become a debate between one engineer and another? That's the issue here, because it's, there is a problem. And it shouldn't become a debate between two engineers. There should be some scientific method, I imagine, as to how this is resolved, because the way around the legal issue is not to create a legal issue. And so what are we going to task our engineer to do? That's what I'm looking for, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Review.
I would suggest not only just an additional comment, but the engineer needs to be, our peer engineer needs to be here so we can answer specific questions, because the board is going to have follow-up.
Yeah.
He definitely needs to be here to address this issue.
I just...
Go ahead.
Tim, can you...
Can I also ask a question? What's the issue that was just stated that the peer review had an issue with the drainage? Can you tell me specifically what that is? I understand, if you're saying...
For him to review your calculations to see that they're accurate.
I think he's reviewed the calc, and he doesn't have a problem with that. I think what he's asking is for me to provide additional documentation for the groundwater table or to go out and excavate 40 feet down to confirm it. So if that, I understand that, if that's the issue.
That's actually my question. You said it was groundwater is 40 feet? Give or take.
It's about 20-plus feet in that area down.
20-plus.
20.
Okay.
Well, I think to the board...
Because I'm looking at the existing elevations and where it's estimating to be elevation eight, so it's about 20 feet down in that area. We did test pits that were 10-plus feet, so we'd have to go on additional 10 feet down.
I think the peer engineer has to resolve this. They've made a comment.
Yeah.
Right.
And they have to answer that comment as to what would be satisfactory from their perspective. That's it.
And I'm fine with that. If the documentation of a record plan that's been used for years, it doesn't satisfy them, and we're required to do a 20-plus-foot test pit in that area to prove the groundwater elevation is at least four feet below elevation 19, because that's the bottom of our stone is 19, so we need to be at 15, and we were at 17, so we need to go a couple feet deeper.
Yeah, it's just so that this is not left open-ended, that's all.
If we have to do that, then that's totally fine.
Can I ask Mr. Gary a question? When you built your garage, I'm assuming you just put footings. Obviously, there's no cellar there. When you did excavate for the footings, did you find that it was mostly...
We went down six feet, and we did not hit groundwater at six feet.
No, no, but it was a consistent sand, so...
Then probably three old, what do you want to call it?
Oil tanks?
No, there wasn't any oil tanks. We had two former, I want to say, not septic tanks, but cesspools.
Honeycomb.
Yeah, honeycomb leftovers that were backfilled, and probably the pits from three or four outhouses that we dug up.
Not surprising.
No, not surprising, considering the age of the property and that's what it used to be, but it just, like I say, it is all sand, and there is no...
And where you flood, would you say that the ground is the same consistency?
Yes.
And it still doesn't drain adequately?
About two-and-a-half hours after the rain stops, it starts to dry up. But that's just about where the leach field is.
Yeah.
Which is, the leach field was put in before we purchased the property about six years ago, and its infiltrators.
I'm pretty confident that the engineers are probably going to come to a...
I'm pretty sure that when it's flooded, my leach field is also flooded.
Oh, I would absolutely guarantee you that.
I have no doubt in my mind, because it's a pond on top of the leach field. So you're just waiting for it to drain out, so the leach field will then again drain on top of that.
But it gets flushed frequently.
Yeah.
See how lucky you are?
No. Yeah, I knew when we bought it, it was the low point in the road, so it was always kind of like iffy.
Might have been put in a different spot, but...
100-plus-year-old house, you kind of get what you get.
True that. Anybody have any other questions for him before we go to other public? Anybody else want to come up?
Hi again. Christine Gary, 77 Brick Hill. I submitted a couple things to Noreen. Not sure if it made it to each of the board members, but I did take pictures of the distance of the garage from here to where their point is and the garage. Just so you could actually see it, I've also asked last meeting for Nick if we could have the engineer come out and stand on the property to see the slope. And we also, I also asked if anybody from the board could, you know, come and represent them as well. I feel that actually standing on the property, you get a really good idea of the impact of the slope that we're going to be dealing with. The other thing I noticed is, if I go back on these pictures... Whoops, we go on the wrong way there. Thank you. As you can see, each one of the houses has, I'm going to go back up even further. Whoops. Hey. I guess it just doesn't like working here. Hang on. I know, I'm way too close for this. Go ahead. Thank you. I was going to say that each one of the properties has a distance from the property line. So you can see here, it says 38, you know, and then, actually, if we go up here, 24, 24, and they all have that. The one thing that's missing is how far is the drainage swale from our property line? It is not there. I don't know if it's actually going to sit directly on our property line, but there is no measurement here saying how far off of the property line that this is going to be. And like I said, I believe I sent...
Depends on how filled it is.
I'm sorry?
Depends on how filled it is.
Right. And I don't know, Noreen, did we, were you all given the pictures of the actual overview that, of the property that I sent to your email?
I didn't see one.
I can, do you want me to pull up?
I can double-check. I'm pretty sure we would have thrown it.
Yeah, I'm going to put my own in, if that's all right. I'm just going to take a, just quickly show you. So basically, these are the pictures that your engineer came in and took, and it shows a building here, but this building here is not our building, that is our neighbor's shed. Our property actually goes down from here, and the garage is down. All of this scrub and all of the trees stop the water from coming, and it disperses and helps with the absorption. This is the side of the garage overhang. This is where the drainage swale will be. That's how close it's going to be to the garage. A better view is this. This is my garage, and this is where they want to put the drainage swale. I don't have any information on how far away it's going to be, if it's going to be right there. So this is why we have a concern. And if you look, you can see white up in here, so you're talking an elevation. The other thing that wasn't mentioned is all of these have lines for the topographical of the area, but none of them are on our property. And just to show you, this is my house. It says it's 26, but if you stand here and look down, it's about a four-foot drop, maybe even a five-foot drop from the road. So that is, slopes down towards our septic system. So again, that's not where the runoff comes from. The runoff comes from our driveway here. But the elevation that we have a concern with is, they're saying this is 26. I'm saying it's not. I'm saying it's less than 26 now, and I'm saying that over our septic system, it is definitely lower than that, and that's why we have the sediment of water just sitting there when it comes off of the other properties. So...
Go ahead, Mark.
Can I ask Tim one more question? It's your contention as an engineer that these structures, the way you've designed them, are most certainly going to improve the conditions that are in their yard from present to post-construction, because, you know, they have, their problems are twofold. What comes off Brick Hill Road and what comes off your four acres? And if you deal with your four acres properly, as your license to do, their project, their problems should be cut 50%.
It definitely should be reduced. I can't tell you whether it'd be 50%. I'd have to run calculations.
What portion comes off of it?
Right now, it definitely, I guess if you just follow my little pointer here, it definitely slopes from this western to the eastern side, and right now, there is no drainage control on that property, so it's just all sheet flows down. So we will be improving the proposed conditions over the existing by collecting the runoff that currently comes across.
And you're familiar with their property, and I mean, even if the town were to install a berm, because they're in the low spot, it would do next to nothing.
I mean, I'd have to review and engineer their property if you're more than happy to provide a proposal. You know, the elevations that were shown on this map, if you don't mind if I use it?
No.
That's from Town GIS, you know, so this isn't a survey that I performed, just, I'm not sure of the reference of the engineer that took the pictures. It wasn't, just so everyone knows, it wasn't me. And our drainage system is approximately 17 feet. The earth swale would be 17 feet off of that property line, so it's not being put right up against this property.
That's just the outer.
That this would be the property line itself, and then it would be in from the property line. And that's not the subsurface, that's just the collection basin.
I guess in your professional opinion, a berm is not necessary, is that what you're saying?
So we do have... There is a small berm here. There is a berm here, so it's not like, it's going to come down, it's going to collect, it's going to flow into this basin, and there is a berm there. So this basin is designed to hold a 100-year storm. It is not designed to overflow. If it overflows, there's an issue with the subsurface drainage. Does that answer?
Yeah, that's, we'll have to wait for our engineer, but I mean...
As you're talking to him, you know what the concerns of the abutters are, so the more you can get together with Beals and Thomas and get through these items, it would make our next meeting that much easier. Thank you.
I do have one more that I would like to bring up. So I was listening at the last meeting, and I heard that the owner wanted to use the garages because they added on additional storage space for each of the units. Well, when we put, when the proposal came in, the two garages here and here were used for storage for these two buildings. Now that they're not using them, I would suggest that we remove them and put the trash bin over here. And the reason why is they showed how the person would pick up the trash, but understanding that this is a road that comes in and out, so it's a main throughway. Whereas if it was over here, it is not in a main throughway, and it has easily accessible either by backing in, or if it's a front-loading refuse truck, it can drive in and pick it directly up, back out a little, and then drive away.
More centrally located as well.
Yep, exactly. And then it's in between all the buildings where they'll be able to go much easier to go bring their trash instead of having to go and stop, drop their trash off. But that would just be a suggestion, since the garages are not being used for the storage anymore. And the only other thing is, is I really, again, I'm going to see if we can get a date for the engineers to come to my house and be able to address our issues, if we could, along with the town, if anybody would like to also come.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I had an issue with that dumpster being there. You drive in, and that's the first thing you see.
You drive in, and that's the first thing you see. It's like, not aesthetically-
Welcome.
Lovely, you know?
Just one more from the public.
Oh, one more, thank you. Come on up. Thanks, Scott. I didn't see you either, Nick.
Hello, I'm Debbie McDonald.
Thanks.
How are you? I just have a couple of questions, like the lighting, is it gonna be glaring behind the buildings into our yards? Or what's the deal with, you know, we talked, I know last meeting, there's talk about certain kinds of lighting, they don't really intrude on the property, so it's not gonna look like a football field, and it won't glare. So I don't know what kind of lighting they're talking about.
They showed it in the picture.
But I mean, is it gonna be bright lights in the back of the homes, shining into people's yards?
Downward. It's, it's showed in the photo where it's gonna-
Okay, so I couldn't see it. Okay, so it's gonna go down?
Yeah.
So the next question is, you said you talked to people in the neighborhood, so I was curious, like, people talk to you about wanting a fence versus trees, or both? Like, I don't know if you've ta, I haven't talked to anyone. I think we need a fence and then trees, because people are, it's, I'm not gonna have any privacy. That's my concern. And also, I'm curious how many people this whole thing is gonna hold.
Where is your property in relationship to-
I'm in Sophie Lane. I'm on Sophie Lane, and I'm actually in the back corner, and there's an easement. So, you know, if there's no fence there, like, people could, it's just like, there's a big, I don't want people tramping through, and I just feel like there's a lot of people we're talking about living there. And I don't think we're gonna have any privacy. I feel like we need to have a little bit more, I feel, I would feel safer, I don't know what about other people, but I would feel better if there was a fence around it. And then some shrubbery trees as a buffer, so it doesn't look hideous, you know, 'cause it's not gonna look great. But that's just my opinion. And I also was concerned, like, you know, we talked about the 40B property, you know, the units for the 40B. I still, you know, I thought Massachusetts, they were actually supposed to look like the other structures. They do not. So I don't get it. I don't understand why that's okay.
Get them next.
Like, they don't jive. It's very, it's like stigmatizing, I think, those properties, and I don't know if anyone agrees with me, but I feel it's a stigma. I feel like they don't fit in. They're on their own side. They just, I don't think it looks good. That's just my opinion. And so my only concern was the lighting. I think we should have a fence, then some trees. That would also help with the water, 'cause when you have that, the trees in there, the fence, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna hold more, and it's not gonna allow, like, dirt and whatever to come through. And I just feel like it would, I feel much safer if it was fenced off, 'cause that's just, that's about it.
Mike?
All right, thanks.
May I ask, may I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, ma'am-
You asking her?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanna ask a question. You know, with regard to architecture, I have been pushing back, we have been pushing back to Mr. Marioni about the designs.
Yeah.
And I just wanna, and not with a lot of success, particularly the large buildings. What is it you'd like to see, if they could do that, reasonably do that, what would you like to see them do, something that looks-
I think it looks like a two-tier of a prison. It looks like a cell block right now.
Maybe a Motel 6.
I mean, I'm sorry, but that's what it looks like. When I watch a movie with the prison, cell block, that's what, right away, when I look at that, that's what I see. It looks, it doesn't look homey.
So should we eliminate it?
I think you could change it, yeah.
So you're happy enough, again, I don't wanna be pushing back too hard, where we don't need to push back on the applicant, but these things are gonna be over the top. And if you're satisfied, other than the fact that it may be a prison area-
Yeah. Pretty much.
Is it something, should we be thinking about not approving them right there?
Yeah. I mean, I think that we need affordable housing, but, I mean, I mean, I don't have to live in it, but I don't think, it doesn't, it's very disjointed to me, the way it is.
It doesn't fit in within the community. Is that what you're saying?
It doesn't fit in within the development, and I think that it's supposed to be more cohesive when you do a 40B plan. And the community, I don't know. I just, I see a lot of different developments that have been put in off a locust field. There's a lot of nice developments, single-family homes, and I'm just, I see a lot that look great. They don't, they look like everyone else's house, right? But why, why is this so gargantuan and so, I just, I don't get why the scale of it in such a small area and why it's even being considered?
It's to create density, is what it's for.
I know, but do we need that? I don't, I don't understand. I think it's too much. I've said it before, I think it's too many people. I mean, how many people are gonna be actually on that four acres of land when everyone moves in? How many people are living in the one, the studios?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank, do you have a question for her?
Can I do one question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Frank had one for you.
I know you're lucky.
I'm not used to this, I'm like, okay.
In your comments-
Yes.
You sort of confused me.
Yeah.
Are you saying that all, you think all the affordable units are in units A and B?
I thought that, I thought most of the units were in those two buildings, the studios.
Spread throughout the entire project.
They are, so...
So those two units that you're talking about-
Okay.
Have both affordable and market rate.
Okay, I don't think that was clear to me in the last meeting, and now it is, but thank you-
Okay.
For clarifying.
You go sit down.
You should've been a school team.
We have two more, Nick. If you, you wanna address Debbie first, or? Come on up, Richard. You're in line, Richard.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Ladies before gentlemen, no.
He doesn't have his chance yet.
Richard Johnson, 1 Amets Avenue. I'm a landscape architect. I just wanna point out that that central island, which in the concept landscape plan had nice trees on it, is also the septic field, so the trees can't go there. So there's a, there's a small portion of that island which has the capacity for having trees. And when the final landscape plan comes in, I want you to consider that.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good point. And the kids play area is there, too.
And the snowplows.
And the snowplows, right. It's a big area.
Christina, you did bring up, somebody brought up about, okay, the people in the units. Did the engineers take into account if there was additional people in there? You know, they're sneaking in the families, increase water usage, this and that. In relation to their property, would all, everything come into the play? Do they take in that percentage of the unknown, having additional people that will increase water intake and everything else in regards to the downslope in their property, because we know it has, it does happen? And the trees? Debbie, everybody was good, I can't talk anymore. My mouth is dry.
Jennifer Gleason, 23, Sophie. I always have something to say. The lights, like, right now, my backyard is pitch black, which is great. So I'm concerned that three or four of the housing units are right in my backyard. I'm at 23. I am literally in the middle, myself and Tina, and one other woman who's not here. But we literally will get the bulk of the lighting, even though you say it's gonna be facing downward. That's what they said on the neighbor in the development across the street from me, on Brick Hill Road, and I get lights from them, too. So I'm just concerned how much lighting, and if he is willing to talk about trees and fencing, I am happy to talk with him about that. But right now, I can walk out my backyard butt naked, and no one would see me. So I wanna know how much light is really gonna actually stay on. I can walk out, I can see the stars. Right now, it's quiet as can be at my house. I mean, yes, we're a mile and a half from downtown. You don't hear all the traffic, you don't hear all the hustle and bustle, so I'm just concerned about that. And then I'm gonna have all this new hustle and bustle in the backyard that, for the past 24 years, I've enjoyed peace and quiet. So, but that's all I have to say.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Could we have someone, whoever created the photometric plan, explain about light trespass? Because this is gonna be a concern for you, it is now. So light trespass, maybe we could have, who created that, not you? I know it's downlighting, but it's-
The plan was created by Lighting Apps. It's a company out of Ohio that hopes to sell us the lights. So they do the lighting plans in hopes that we'll buy the lights from them.
So, but the question is, it's about light trespass. Do you believe that the light trespass will be minimized, or will there be significant light trespass?
I believe that there will be no spill off the property from any lights that we have on there. It doesn't mean they're not gonna see a light. If somebody turns a light on in their kitchen, you're gonna see the light. You know, you're gonna see that there is a light on outside, but it's gonna be shaded so it's pointing down and not off the site.
Right.
Not like a spotlight, you know, so...
I just wanted to help allay the issues.
It's just with the picture that you showed, each house, with the pictures that you showed, each apartment has two on the back of it, yeah.
Let me call the backup and I'll show you.
I get the light trespass, and I mean, I get that, but I still think it's gonna be...
All right, so...
So on your picture, I would have two, four, six, eight lights that would be possibly coming onto my property, which is gonna brighten that whole area up, no matter, no matter how you look at it. Right now, I walk outside and it's pitch black.
This is the property line.
Yep.
This is the spill of the lights off the houses. That's what these lines represent.
Okay, so when I file a complaint that I can't walk outside, it's pitch black and I can't enjoy the stars at night.
It's not gonna be pitch black, I can tell you that. And you will be able to see stars, but you're also gonna see lights, it's just not gonna spill onto your property.
Okay.
And if we can get some, if we can get some buffering, we can even knock that down a little bit, you know, you'll be looking through the-
You say, the only time you reached out to us was the very first visit that we all met, and we talked, but no one's reached out more now that we're further along. When you're looking to do all of this, no one's reached out sooner, or at least recently, to talk to anybody about the shrubbery.
There's an open invitation to every abutter that I made, the first time I met with them, I've made it at previous meetings. Anytime you wanna contact me, I will come over and go over this stuff with you. Just call me.
Do you have a business card, everybody?
Any abutter, yeah. I've called you, you didn't wanna see me.
You called me yesterday and asked to meet with me, but I'm like, I can't-
You were at the meeting on the-
Excuse me?
I can't argue, so, let me see. Mr. LeBlanc-
But if you do have a business card, I'd be happy to take it.
Yes, I will give you one.
That'd be great, thank you. And he can leave one with Noreen. If anyone has a question, you can always call the office.
I'll leave a few of them here.
Question about this.
Go ahead.
These are backdoor lights. Are they gonna automatically turn on when it gets dark, or is it gonna be controlled?
No, they're by switch.
The switch inside.
Yes.
Unless somebody's actually outside, they may not even be on.
Right.
All right.
This, please.
Thank you. Thank you.
I guess the other question here, too, is, is it gonna be clear-cut to the lot line, or are you going to maintain some existing landscaping there?
We're gonna leave as much as we can for our own privacy, as well as the neighbors' and, as I stated earlier, we will go out there with caution tape and run caution tape in the area that we plant the clear. And we will discuss it with every abutter and the town's peer review engineer, like we've done on other properties, before we cut the trees.
But now, in that drainage swale area at the east, that will be clear-cut for them?
Yes, it will, yes.
So there's no buffer there, then?
Well, there is a, there is a mound at the top of it. We may be able to put some evergreen shrubs on that. We'll do whatever we can.
Well, Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Tony.
What if we conditioned it that you would leave X number of feet as a buffer? Or you wouldn't cut anything less than four-inch caliper or six, something of that nature?
Well, that's, it could be four-inch caliper trees right in the roadway, in the middle of the site.
No, no, I'm not, I'm talking about along the edge.
Well, if, if, we don't wanna cut anything we don't have to cut. We can always take them down, but we can't put them back.
Believe me, I understand that, and, but it happens. This is a major development, and these things just happen. So maybe we need to condition, so I'm trying to get to a point where you're telling us something that you will do, and not with a maybe, but I will do this, or I will do that, because maybe we need to condition a buffer for these folks.
I don't see how that works. I think you were better off with what I propose, which is to mark what we're gonna clear. And even with that, as from experience, we may clear trees, and others may be exposed that were weak, and the wind knocks them down, those things happen, too.
I get that, but maybe it has to be conditioned where you cut trees and then you replace them with evergreens. I don't know that. I'm trying to get to a point where, to get into the testimony, where you might be willing to do something, so we can maybe craft the condition, if it's approved, craft the conditions that go into that. Am I incorrect on that? Through you, Madam Chair?
They're fine.
All right. So I'm just trying to get you to outline what you're thinking that keeps maybes out and puts in, we will do this if we do this. So it's fine if you go there and you meet with everybody and you mark the trees, and then it just, for some reason, it comes down because you really had to have it come down. I know how this works, I've cleared sites. So I'm just trying to figure out a way that works for you, works for you, works for the abutters, where if you clear-cut, for whatever the reasons may be, they should put something back up, whether it be a fence with, say, evergreens, just to throw something out there. I don't know what belongs there, because I don't know where the sun is. That's all I'm trying to get you to do, is to maybe say that this is what we would do under these circumstances. Otherwise, we end up, I don't wanna end up designing it for them, but we can make a condition for what you do.
We stake the foundation corners on the site. We're gonna mark the limit of clearing, and we're gonna go out there with the abutters and the peer review engineer and mark any trees that don't get cut down, that have to be saved.
It's your testimony that you're going to keep trees.
Why do you have to cut this one down? Pardon me?
It's your testimony that you're going to keep trees.
It's, the goal is to keep trees, not to cut anything we don't have to.
It's conditioned, yeah, we'll just condition it.
And then, and then we add where we need to buffer. Some places may be naturally buffered.
Yeah. I was just thinking, you really only have to buffer really two sides, you know, 'cause that side you don't have.
And some people may not want the fence. They'd rather have a combination of fence and shrubs. You know, we'll work with them.
Okay. Anybody else from the public? Anybody else up here? Wrapping it up. Nick? You all set?
I, I think so. I'm, yeah, I think so. We gotta come back again.
You got a good homework.
I was gonna address that garage issue and the dumpster. We'll look at moving that garage down to where the dumpster is now and putting the dumpster up there. We'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
It sounds like a reasonable request.
When you drive in, you know, who wants to see a dumpster when you drive in?
On the other hand, you're putting the dumpster where there's a lot of people.
Right, where they can get to it.
Where they can get to it, but they also maybe have to deal with a backup, backing-up truck, too, so there's-
Yeah, there's both ways, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Noreen, what are we looking for, for a date?
Well, before you do that, Madam Chair, may I ask through you, how many days have we got left on our magic calendar?
The old drop-dead date.
The old drop-dead date.
January 7th is 180 days.
Okay, we got a point, let's do this in December.
Can we fit this in December?
That's the goal.
Did you pick one yet?
December 19.
19. Is that good for you, Nick? And Tim?
I try to keep Thursday nights open. Yes, I can do December 19th. Tim? Okay.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to continue this hearing to December 19th, 2024. Sorry to cut you off, right?
No. That's fine, that's fine.
Second?
Motion, the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, continuing. I oppose, none. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.
All right, moving on.
Yes, what is our- Yes, what is our first meeting of 2025?
January 1st.
January 9th.
So, that's beyond our drop dead date.
Yes.
So, we'll have to get a.
So, we have to wrap this up on the 19th of December.
Last day, let's give us two days.
Get a continuation or a special meeting.
Maybe he'll give us a month or something.
Nick will give us two days.
Two days.
Do you want to take a recess before we start?
Sure. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Overly District, partially in the search and rescue, and the flood zone X. The premises is comprised of two separate abutting lots that are undeveloped. Zero Acapescot comprises 15,000 square feet, and zero Bayberry is 52,2. Together, the lots comprise a total of 67,2, 1.54 acres. The topography of the premises is approximately 32 feet, resulting in a failure level lot, 100 feet of frontage on Acapescot, a public right-of-way complying with the minimum 100-foot requirement. There are neighboring single-family dwellings. The land to the west is currently undeveloped. However, it is now under review for a subdivision. There are no prior zoning board of appeals decisions on either of the two lots. Four, the Town of Falmouth, Massachusetts Housing Production Plan report dated March 2024 identifies the goal to add 80 new SHI affordable units in a given year. Five, the proposal requested the grant of a comprehensive permit for the construction of six single-story duplex buildings, 12 total units, comprised of 10 units with two bedrooms each, one unit with one bedroom, and one unit with three bedrooms. The proposed density is 7.79 units per acre. The buildings are proposed to be dimensioned 56 by 28. All units are proposed to include one bathroom, and the three affordable units are proposed for purchases, earning a maximum of 80% of the area median income, as calculated by HUD for Bonsable County. Don't forget to hold anytime you're, you're ready. Six, the dwelling units include a first-floor bedroom and bathroom, minimum 32-inch doorway width, which the developer can make handicap accessible upon request. According to the housing production plan, there remains a limited inventory of handicap-accessible units. These units have no garages. However, a nine-foot by 18-foot parking space shall be provided per unit, with an additional nine parking spaces available for guests, which leaves it a total of 34 parking spaces, two of which have handicapped. One HP space shall be van-accessible. Each unit shall have its own water service and shall have a bulkhead and patio at the side of the unit. The electric panel is located on the first floor. The proposed lot coverage by structure is 15.5 within the 20. Lot coverage by structure parking paving is 48, requiring a waiver from the bylaw of 40. Seven, sheds are not proposed on the premises due to the limited square footage of the combined lot, lack of location to cite the sheds, and existing lot coverage by structures parking paving exceeding the bylaw. Condominium documents are intended to identify this limitation.
Hold, please.
Hold for Jim. Eight, the premises shall be accessed by a common driveway. The applicant stated that the driveway shall be maintained by the HOA, shall remain private, and shall not qualify to be accepted by the town as a way due to the layout not complying with town road standards. The proposed exterior lighting is at doorways, which shall be dark sky compliant and not shed illumination off-site. Lighting needs to be added to the final site plan to illuminate the entrance and driveway area to be maintained by the HOA. Nine, affordable units have been identified as 1A, 4A, 6B. They're all two-bedroom units. The board expressed support for the affordable units to be two bedrooms, acknowledging that there would be the same number of bedrooms if the affordable units, if the affordable units comprised one bedroom, one two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom. With the change to ownership, units shall be owner-occupied. Ten, units are proposed to be sighted 25 feet from the street line and no less than 10 from the rear and sidelines. In accordance with the setback provisions by the bylaw requiring 25 feet and 10, the building shall be a minimum of 20 feet apart. Units are expected 20 feet in height. Eleven, the assessor notes that the properties must be merged and recorded at the registry of deed. Twelve, the premises lies within a nitrogen-sensitive area. The Board of Health will review the application for compliance with the Title V and noted that there is area on the plan to add the denitrification for septic if required. The town is currently engaged in watershed planning and permitting with the DEP. The town also plans to install town sewer on Acapescot in the future in the next searing project. The development is designed to be able to connect to town sewer. There are a total of 24 bedrooms proposed for this development. Thirteen, the water superintendent has required specific water mains and a hydrant location to be shown on the revised site plans and approved by the fire department. The applicant shall provide an easement for the water main extension in a form approved by the town. The tap and sleeve assemblies shall be inspected, will be inspected, including pressure testing, chlorination, and sampling. Four, a shared play area is now planned at the southwest corner of the premises. Fifteen, in addition to landscaping, six-foot-tall sections of 16-feet-long fencing are proposed to be sighted at the northerly, southerly, and easterly areas of the property lot line behind buildings 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6. Two sections of fencing, each 24 feet in length, are proposed at the southeast corner of the premises between units 5 and 6. Sixteen, mailbox placement is planned at the southerly side of the entrance to the development, proximate to the five-foot-wide concrete sidewalks. There are some parking spaces, the bus shelter, and a stop sign. Trash pickup and snow removal is proposed to be private. Snow storage is proposed at the leaching field area of the development. Eighteen, the proposal does not comply with certain zoning bylaw provisions. As provided in Chapter 40B, the applicant has requested waivers from specific provisions, each of which the zoning board must separately vote on. Nineteen, the abutters to the proposal express the following. Number one, concern about traffic on Acapescot and existing difficulty assessing East Sandwich Road. Two, concern about the increased density adding to traffic congestion and noise. Three, concern about the distance of the unit and development from abutters. And four, landscape elements to ensure that both new residents and abutters have sufficient screening.
I'd like to add nine and 19.
You want to add something to 19?
No, just to quite discuss it or question it.
Okay.
Thank you.
My question on 19, by the way, is what does East Sandwich Road got to do with this?
Yeah.
So, that was just an issue that the abutters raised. So, this was just to capture the concerns that the abutters expressed.
Madam Chairman, I believe that, my recollection was that the abutters also concerned about that there was not be any vehicle traffic passing through to the neighboring cul-de-sac or road. That was, I think, now before planning.
The new development.
Yeah, I think, I agree. What's the new one called? I can't remember the name of it.
I think it was Old Bayberry that they did not want to have additional traffic on.
Madam Chairman, I don't need seven held. It's, the finding is fine. It's more of a condition, which we haven't got to yet.
Okay.
But my question was, there's no such place as East Sandwich Road, is there?
Sandwich Road from the east, I think it's.
So, maybe we just write concern about traffic on Acapescot and.
Yeah, that was it.
In relative to the new development?
And the neighborhood in general or something.
And the neighborhood in general? Okay. Does that sound okay with everybody?
I don't understand what it's, what it means when you refer to East Sandwich Road. I'm not even familiar with it.
Maybe it was east going easterly.
East to Sandwich Road. I think if you just put a two in there.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what it was.
You'd be fine.
Do we want to vote the findings?
It's accessing 28 out of the development, but that's right.
Sandwich Road to the east.
But it's pretty far from 28, though. Do we want to vote the findings?
Well, we got two to discuss.
Well, Jim, just.
Seven.
I would do seven. It's more, it issues more about conditioning.
I have a question on nine.
Okay.
Where you say, with the change to homeownership, units shall be owner-occupied. Now, I understand that all of the affordable units must be owner-occupied, but I'm not sure that the market rate units have to be owner-occupied, and I don't even know we have authority to say they are, because it's.
Well, I think the applicant said they're going to be owner-occupied.
So, we could simply strike that last line.
Just a little sentence.
Because we do have condition in the conditions section that requires the affordable homeowners to reside year-round in this.
That's understood.
So, we just strike the last line if that works.
Does that work for you, just striking it?
Strike it, because I think it raises some confusion with a later condition. That's why I raised it.
Okay. Anybody else have any other findings? Do you just want to go right to conditions?
Vote the findings.
Vote the findings first.
Let's approve the findings as presented with the.
With the amendments.
Amendments we have discussed.
Second.
Any other discussion on those?
Who's voting on this?
I just have a question.
You are, because you're on this, yeah.
On number 15. And I'm just not familiar. In addition to landscaping, six-foot-tall sections of 16-foot-long fencing? I've never encountered any 16-foot-long fencing in my life.
All right, so those, that information was taken from the site plan that was submitted by the applicant?
So, it should be totaling 16 feet, then?
Yeah. Six-foot-tall sections of 16-foot-long fencing.
Or totaling 16 feet long, because.
Oh, yeah, that's, you're right.
There's no.
Is there eight foot?
If there was, I'm sure I could carry him, but, you know.
So, they, they might be doing, so what happened is on the site plan, they would show the fencing, and they showed the fencing to be 16 feet in length. So, I didn't remark about how long a section would be.
No, you put section in, that's, I was just pointing, it's.
Right, so I think what I had captured here was the dimensions from the site plan that said that the fence would be 16 feet in total.
Yeah, he wants the word total in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you can just reword it that way. Yeah, because they don't make 16-foot chunks, so they don't.
No, yes.
Through that. Anything else? We have a motion in a second? Everybody's all set? All those, this is just Tony.
Fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay, we'll move on to conditions. G1, where this comprehensive permit is made specifically under Mass General Law 40B, Section 2023, allowing the override of local zoning density, there shall be no as-of-right changes made to the subject property. Any changes requested shall be made, shall be properly submitted to the zoning board of appeals, as provided under Mass General Law 40B.
Chairman, I move to approve condition one as written, G1.
Second.
Any discussion? Everybody's good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? G2, the construction shall be substantially as shown on the plans and submitted and reviewed by the board as follows. And I'm not going to read all those, unless you want me to.
I'll accept the, I'll just written based on the zoning administrator's input of the plans.
And I can second? All, any discussion on that one? Go ahead.
Right at the end of that, right prior to, it says, plans are not stamped or signed. Last line, right before the line for voting. I just, anything to add to that?
So, plans for single-family or two-family dwellings are not required to be stamped by an architect. They can be drawn by a design person. So, these plans that were submitted to you were not currently stamped by an architect.
And that, and that's more because they're not the construction plans. If they were construction plans and it was the designer, you'd need an engineer or an architect to stamp it. But these are just.
Want that clarified in that paragraph?
No, no. Good, just my own.
Okay. Education. So, we're voting on, did we, we had a, yeah, we had a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, G3. Oh, opposed, no. G3, all stormwater from the premises shall be directed to recharge on the premises. The stormwater system shall be operated and maintained privately per the approved O&M in perpetuity. All required reports, inspections, and checklists shall be submitted per the O&M in perpetuity. All requirements shall be contained within the condo docks. Any change in responsibility of the stormwater management system shall be reported to the town engineer. Compliance with the town's stormwater management rules and regs shall be peer-reviewed.
Who are the plans submitted, shall be submitted per the O&M plan? Who do they submit them to?
All, any changes in responsibility.
All required reports.
Shall be submitted. Oh, yeah, that should be in there. Who do they submit them to, Noreen?
So, these will go to the peer engineer, and a copy will go to town engineering, because the peer is standing in for the town.
But this is in perpetuity. I mean, that, that's like 100 years, or.
So, then. We should just write the town, then, no?
Yeah, that's fine.
I think we should just write.
The town.
I don't know, it seems clear to me that changes have to then go to town engineering. Currently, it's going to the peer.
We could just have everything go to the town, because they need a copy anyway, so we'll just add that.
Right.
So, we have that amendment. Anyone, anyone, everyone else okay with that one?
Yeah.
Want to make me a motion, Jim?
Sure. Madam Chairman, I move that we adopt G3 as amended.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? G4, the private driveway shall remain private. Trash, recycling, and snow plowing shall be privately managed and shall be included in the condo docks. Everybody could.
Make a motion to approve as written.
I'll second again. All set, everybody?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? G5, parking or storage of any unregistered vehicle on the premises is strictly prohibited. This shall be included in the condo docks.
Do we all include boats?
Yeah, why not?
Yeah, they should.
Yeah.
Those are technically not considered vehicles, though. You're right, but.
We don't want them anyways.
Is a trailer, is that kind of thing considered a vehicle?
If it's registered. It's going to be registered.
Registered, yeah.
Okay. All right, so you've changed it?
I'll make a motion to amend to include boats, storage of boats.
Okay.
Boats and trailers.
Unregistered boats or boats?
Boats.
Boats in general.
Boats.
Okay. Just so it's clear.
There's no room.
Well, exactly. It's taking up parking spots.
All right, everybody's got the boats? We're all set on that one? Jim, you want to make me a motion?
Move to approve G5 as amended.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G6, any deviation, no matter how minor, from plans submitted and approved shall be submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals for approval. Prior to the implementation of said change, the zoning administrator may make a determination as to whether the changes are minor in nature and can be improved administratively, or whether they will require a public hearing for an amendment. Changes made prior to any, to an approval shall be subject to a full hearing and are at risk that the Zoning Board of Appeals may deny any request. Subjecting any unapproved construction can be ordered undone. Any problems with that one?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve G6 as published.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G7, the comprehensive permit shall be a master permit, which will, which shall subsume all local permits and approvals normally issued by local boards other than as specifically enumerated. In the condition, the Board of Health and Conservation are excluded from this provision.
Madam Chairman, make a motion to approve G7 as written.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G8, this permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk, that twenty days has elapsed after the decision has been filed in the office of the town clerk with no appeal being filed, and is recorded in the Boswell County Registered Deeds, or that an appeal has been filed within such time. Quotations, any person exercising rights under a duly appealed comprehensive permit does so at risk, and that a court may reverse the permit, and that any construction performed under the permit may be ordered undone, end of quote.
Move to approve as written.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? G9, the permit shall lapse three years from the date in which this decision is filed at the town clerk's office if a substantial use of comprehensive permit has not sooner commenced, except for a good cause, as determined by the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Move to approve as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G10, the comprehensive permit shall not be transferred without express written approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals in accordance with 760 CMR 56.
Move to approve as written.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G11, each condition in this decision shall run with the land and shall, in accordance with its terms, be applicable to and binding on the applicant and the applicant's successors and assigns.
Move to approve G11 as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G12, the maximum height of the single-story dwelling shall not exceed twenty-one feet.
Move to approve G12 as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G13, construction hours shall be limited to seven, to seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday. Saturday hours are eight AM to four PM. No Sunday or town-observed holidays absent an emergency. All construction vehicles shall remain strictly on the subject property and not park on abutting streets. Construction vehicles are prohibited from idling near the premises outside of construction hours. During construction, efforts should be undertaken to minimize impacts on abutters, including securing dumpsters, stabilizing soil to guard against erosion from a rain event, and ensuring that public roadways are kept clean.
I have a question. Oh, is this a hold? No, right. What is, what is the definition of minimize impacts on abut? What, what is minimizing, and what is an impact? I mean, am I pushing that too far? I mean, how do you define that? Who, who defines that?
So, this is more of a directive that you are telling the developer that you expect them to make best efforts to not have an adverse impact on the abutters.
No trash.
So, you want to, right, not have any trash blowing into abutting properties.
Dust.
You know, if you, if you have done excavation, and there's a big rainstorm coming, we ask people to make sure that they've provided for that, that type of thing. So, it's relatively general.
So, it's a very broad statement?
Meant that way on purpose.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Leave room to complain.
There's no way we could come up with an exhaustive list of no-no's.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
We'd be here all night doing this. I'll make the motion to do G.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G14, the development shall be limited to a maximum of six duplex dwellings, twelve total units, and a maximum of twenty-four bedrooms. Three of the units shall remain in perpetuity, affordable to eligible purchases, whose annual income shall not exceed eighty percent of the area median income, as determined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The three affordable dwellings shall be eligible for inclusion in the town's SHI, maintained by mass housing. Any increase in the number of bedrooms is a violation of the zoning bylaw in this comprehensive permit.
Move to approve G14 as written.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Fifteen, the dwelling unit shall include a first-floor bedroom and bathroom with a minimum thirty-two-inch doorway width. The developer shall make units handicap accessible upon request of the buyer.
What does it mean, a first-floor bedroom? They all have first-floor bedrooms, but they have other bedrooms, too.
It, it is all one, one-story, so.
So, we don't really, well, doesn't hurt to have it, anyway.
I think you're just expressing that it's technically.
Makes it handicap accessible.
Accessible, because it's a single-story.
Yeah. I'll move G15.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G16, there shall be no further division or subdivision of the premises or the creation of additional housing units, any other structures, without further approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals in the form of an amendment to the decision.
Move to approve G16 as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G17, to the extent permitted by the law, preference for sale of seventy percent, two out of the three affordable units, shall be given to homebuyers that are Falmouth residents, employees of the town, employed within, within the town, or who have children attending town schools. The applicant shall work with the housing coordinator to communicate with the state, and shall provide the lottery information for the affordable units.
Move to accept G17 as written.
And I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? G18, the three affordable year-round, not seasonal, family ownership units shall be included in the SHI and shall be subject to a regulatory agreement, fair marketing, and income guidelines. The affordable units shall not be rented or subletted. Certification of compliance with affordable housing regs shall be submitted after the sale to the zoning board of, after the sale to the Zoning Board of Appeal and Falmouth Housing Coordinator. This certification shall include documentation of each affordable ownership uni, that each affordable ownership unit is occupied by a qualified owner as their primary residence. Homeownership association fees shall be adjusted to, and to be reduced for the affordable units. The affordable unit shall remain affordable in perpetuity, with a use restriction, restriction recorded at the Boswell County Deeds, with a copy to the Zoning Board and the housing coordinator, and shall, and shall survive sale. Any resale of an affordable unit shall be properly managed by an affordable housing specialist and reported in advance to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the town's housing coordinator, and shall include the fact that any future owner is subject to all terms and conditions listed herein as provided in the condominium docks.
Can we add to the sentence? Affordable units shall remain affordable in perpetuity, with a use restriction recorded in the Boswell County Registry of Deeds, and shall survive sale, by adding "and" foreclosure?
Yes.
Good idea.
Can, can we, is there a definition for the homeownership association fee should be adjusted to be reduced for the affordable units? What measure of reduction is being made? Is there a measure of that?
I don't think the board really got into those details, so the language is suggesting that that be the case.
Is there anything in the CMRs about these fees?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not aware of it either, but.
So, they could make it a dollar?
Yeah, they could. I don't think.
So, well, there, there are two things going on. One is, should, the term should is being used versus shall be adjusted. Can, are we just, are we just putting this in there as a suggestion?
One is discretionary, the other is not.
Shall means must.
I don't think it's in the.
In Massachusetts, shall means must.
That's what I mean. So, is this just a suggestion? Or a requirement?
It's a coaxing.
I don't think it's harm to say shall and let them figure it out.
All right. So, we're writing, add, we're adding "and" foreclosure and changing.
Um, remind me where you're adding "and" foreclosure to.
At the end of sale.
I have a point on that to discuss.
Okay. G18, Noreen?
I get you.
We'll make it shall. And then Frank did the, right after "and" should survive sale, we have to add foreclosure.
Right. Do we want to add the word bankruptcy as well, Frank?
Or bankruptcy, we should, yeah.
Why not?
Why not, is right.
I think a trustee would not discharge a, a, a bona fide purchaser later on for the affordability if it's in the docks.
So, did you get those, Noreen?
Okay, so I have the foreclosure and bankruptcy, and, okay, so we're going from shall.
Homeownership fees shall be adjusted. You see it right above it?
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, perfect.
All right, so that's G18.
Is that something we could research and find out if there is any language on that?
I don't think there is.
I, I don't, I'm pretty sure.
So, I mean, that, that, it's, he, he could make it a dollar, and there's nothing.
Yeah.
It's almost like useless putting it in.
Well, you could always put it in as required by Massachusetts statute.
But there is no statute that has.
We don't know that.
Yeah.
I'm not a hundred percent positive myself. Are you, Frank?
No, and we've seen these documents before, and there's never been a specific requirement, except that there be a reduction. I've never seen a specific amount.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Did we vote on that yet?
No. So, a shortcoming in there.
Vote to move G18?
As amended.
As amended. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G19, the condominium docks and rules and regs of the master deed shall provide that only market-rate units may be rented for a minimum of one-year period with no seasonal or short-term rentals. Affordable units must be owner-occupied.
The question I, I raised earlier in the findings concerning the sheds, and I'm just looking through the rest of the conditions, Madam Chairman, that, do we want to put something in here about the condition, about the sheds being included in the master, the condominium master documents, that, hey, no sheds? In addition to being a specific condition?
I, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. Well, what if they wanted to use those, like, little rubber-made ones that are only, like, three feet deep? I mean, they, they, they could fit one in the backyard, because what's it, nine feet? Or, or seven feet, or, you know, those little ones?
No, no, I know, I know exactly what you mean, and I, I don't necessarily think those are, I'm just looking at the creep we've had with these other sheds coming in, and I don't think we could possibly hand wordsmith out.
Somebody's going to break their neck bringing a bicycle up and down the bulkhead.
I know.
But we just want to leave it big. Just leave it as a finding that they're intending not to do these. Sooner or later, we could figure something out.
I think we should put something in there, myself. Because it's a pain. And then they come before us, and it's a whole hearing, and the whole, you know.
Right, that's, I'm just trying to save our workload for a request for an insubstantial change a year or two from now.
If it was me, I'd be making some kind of a lean, too, to keep the rest off my bicycle.
G5 is talking about parking and storage to be, I mean, yeah, parking or storage of vehicles, both be, including in the condo dock. Do you want me to add sheds there?
I, I think that might be appropriate, just to, make, make the developer address the issue so that we're not coming back here.
Yeah.
Okay, and sheds, so I'll just put "and" sheds.
That's G5.
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion for the record to amend G5 as further amended regarding sheds.
I'll second that. We're voting on G5. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Now, we're back to, where were we?
G19.
G19.
I'll move the adoption of G19 as written.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor of G19?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G20, drainage structures shall be constructed in accordance with the plans, and all roof areas shall be connected to the drainage structures. Homeowners shall be apprised of said installation. Maintenance and preservation of drainage structures shall be the responsibility of and included as a common element in the condo association docks.
Move to adopt as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G21, the applicant shall create a limited dividend organization, copy to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and comply with all applicable mass housing requirements.
Move to accept this.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? G22, the parcels shall be merged to a single lot, recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and issued a new parcel identification. Addresses shall be assigned by town engineering.
Move to adopt as written.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none?
Would you like somebody else to start reading? You're getting tired.
I'm getting, I need a drink. Yeah, feel free, if you would like.
All right. I'll do the site work, somebody else can take up the building permits.
Let's do it. Thank you.
All right. There's no place to vote on G22, so that has to be.
I will add that in. Yep, I've already gone on here.
Okay, these next conditions relate to site work. S number one, the town is specifically not waiving fees associated with construction, including, but not limited to, the water line, water tapping sleeve and valve, water meters, services, and connections, and engineering, such as the bond for the street opening permits or driveway permit, and the building department fees. The plan involves the installation of one town-specified fire hydrant. Plans shall be submitted according to the specifications of the water superintendent. Each unit shall have a dedicated water service. The application has, is that supposed to be the applicant?
I think so.
The application has stated this is a.
Yeah, applicant.
Applicant.
Yep.
Has stated that this is a private driveway, as such, the driveway and water main shall be privately owned, and maintenance shall be the responsibility of the condominium owners. Any required utility easement shall be in the form and manner as prescribed by the town. Plans show, shall show the location of septic components and water service. Plans shall state all standard, standards, policies, construction practices, or rules and regulations of the Falmouth Water Department shall be adhered to throughout the duration of the project.
Move to approve as written.
I'll second. All those in favor of S1?
Aye.
Aye.
S2, prior to starting work under the comprehensive permit, the applicant, the general contractor, and any necessary subcontractors, and the designated inspection engineer shall hold a pre-construction meeting with the building commissioner, representative of the Department of Public Works, Engineering Division, zoning administrator, water superintendent, Board of Health agent, Falmouth Fire, and Falmouth Police to review soil erosion and sediment control, inspection requirements and procedures, review of conditions, construction traffic, and construction traffic management, general project schedule, building permit submission requirements, street opening permit requirements, NPDES, construction, general permit requirements, work hours, and any other pertinent information.
Move to accept as written.
I, I, a quick, quick question.
Go ahead, Tony.
The term necessary, are they all necessary, or only some necessary subcontractors?
I think subcontractors who are doing work on it with respect to a building permit, but I'm not sure about that. That's a good question.
I mean, what was the reason for necessary, versus just?
So, so that was actually a suggestion of town engineering, and what their intent here is, is that as many people as possible attend these pre-construction meetings, so that everybody understands what's expected about. In the past, we've had some pre-construction meetings where a single developer was present, but then there would be issues with their workforce, and so I think engineering's just trying to get to the point where, you know, somebody's going to be on the property regularly, that they fully understand what's expected of it.
So, you're not going to put, in other words, that would not include the landscaper, for instance? Or would it?
No, not for pre-construction, no.
And necessary is defined by who's ever holding the meeting?
Right, so all departments have different specifications, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Did we vote on that yet?
No, one way you could say any subcontractor's working on the site and.
Well, though, you could wind up with an auditorium. Yeah, you can't, I mean, when you think of some of the larger developments, if you had everybody and anybody that was working on the property, you would need an auditorium, right?
But this is a small project.
Right, so, yeah, I mean.
All subcontractors required by building, engineering, or whoever's holding the meeting.
All right.
Yeah, I kind of leave it up to the people who are doing the construction to.
Can we vote on that one?
I'll second. I'll second. Did you make the motion?
I made a motion.
On S two, S two, right? Yeah, all those in favor of S two?
Aye.
I oppose, none.
S three, the applicant shall meet with the Falmouth Police Department to determine when, if, police details would be required. All police details required by the Falmouth Police Department or per the applicant's own choice shall be paid for by the applicant.
Move to approve as written.
Second. All those in favor of S three? I oppose, none.
S four, construction shall be in accordance with all requirements of town engineering, including the town's two hundred, or two thousand nineteen soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions, which document is affixed herein as appendix A. All uncontaminated stormwater runoff shall be directed to recharge within the premises. No increase in stormwater runoff from the premises is allowed. Engineering sign-off is required prior to site disturbance and the issuance of any building permit for this project. Inspections referenced in the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard Conditions or others, as directed by town engineering, shall be performed by the designated inspection engineer. Erosion and sediment control shall be installed, inspected, and maintained in good condition at all times. Failure to maintain adequate erosion and sediment control on-site will be grounds for stopping all construction activities on-site until the issue is addressed.
Move to approve as written.
Second. All those in favor of S four? I oppose, none.
Moving along to S five. Engineering noted that work within the town's road layout will require a street opening permit from the town. The applicant shall post any required bond and shall properly and timely complete the work as permitted. For the joints with the existing pavement in the town's road layout, the applicant shall transition between the proposed driveway asphalt and existing asphalt to include a one-foot mill and overlay beyond any saw cut for roadway, curbing, sidewalk, or utility trenches as directed by engineering. Transition, transitions from saw cut to top course shall be as required by the town engineering. The applicant shall ensure a smooth transition between the proposed roadway asphalt and existing asphalt within the town right-of-way by including a one-foot mill and overlay beyond any saw cut for roadway, curbing, sidewalk, or utility trenches. Transition shall be, A, saw cut, one foot minimum from edge of any excavation; B, mill one foot minimum from any saw cut, a maximum depth, depth of the existing asphalt top course; C, the binder core shall be laid between saw cuts; D, the top core shall be laid between milling extents. The applicant shall reconstruct the sidewalk along the sidewalk frontage at Acapescot Road with the grass strip and shall install the requisite tactile strip on both sides of the sidewalk on Acapescot Road.
Move to approve as written.
Second. All those in favor of S five? I oppose, none.
S six, the applicant shall file for a stormwater permit with the town prior to the issuance of any building permit.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor of S six? I oppose, none.
S seven, at the applicant's expense, an inspection engineer will be designated for this project from the firms that have been pre-vetted by the town. The inspectional engineer shall be responsible for EPA construction general permit compliance and will perform or oversee responsive, or oversee inspections, testing, material approvals, reports, or other construction-related services as required, and report directly to town engineering. The applicant shall establish a section fifty-three G account through the zoning board of appeals for the inspections, inspection engineer's compensation. The inspection engineer will be specifically responsible for ensuring adherence to the requirements of the town's Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard Conditions, inspection and approval of the driveway subgrade, gravel base, binder course, and curbing, and finish course. At no point shall the contractor construct a driveway surface that was not inspected or approved by the inspection engineer. The inspection engineer will be specifically responsible to review the as-built plans for compliance with the approved plans.
Question?
Go ahead, Tony.
What does that mean? At no point shall the contractor construct on a driveway surface that was not inspected and approved by an inspector, inspection, construct on a driveway, what are they constructing on a driveway surface? What would be constructed on top of a driveway surface?
I think that's a subgrade, yes, the subgrade has to be inspected.
Subgrade, dense grade, whatever they use.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make sure there is one there. Doesn't float away with the mud.
I do like having those.
I'll move to accept as a, to approve and adopt as public.
So I do have a little tweak here, elements of town engineering. On line three, after construction general permit compliance, town engineering requested we add and town stormwater regulations there.
Okay.
And then two lines beyond that, after construction-related services required, inserting with reports submitted to the zoning board of appeals and town engineering. And then at the end of the next paragraph, they ask that we add DPW will oversee right-of-way work only.
On the inspection engineer paragraph?
Yes.
Just, just add it to the bottom?
Adding, right, and then for the last sentence, the inspection engineer may confer with town engineering. And those are their only changes for that.
So we'll move to approve S seven as amended.
Second. All those in favor of approving S seven? Aye.
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 Oppose, none.
S eight, prior to site disturbance, the applicant shall provide a copy of the approved stormwater permit to the board. The applicant shall provide a copy of the EPA construction general permit to engineering and the board. The installed erosion and sediment controls shall be inspected by the town or the inspection engineer.
I have one change there as well, where town engineering asked on the third line after to engineering and the board in parentheses, that it say, "application and fees to town engineering," just as a clarification.
Application and fees to town engineering?
Correct.
Okay. Want to make the motion, Jim?
Sure.
Amended.
S eight as amended.
I'll second. All those in favor of S eight?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none.
S nine, the applicant shall provide to the police, building department, engineering, and zoning board of appeals a name, phone number, and email address of a project contact individual for the duration of the construction process to ensure that any questions or concerns, including those of abutters and residents, are timely managed.
Move to approve S nine as written.
I'll second. All those in favor of S nine?
Aye.
I oppose, none.
S ten, mature, mature trees, particularly those proximate to lot lines, shall be maintained to the extent possible. Trees straddling the property line shall be assumed to be jointly owned and cannot be damaged or removed without the prior written approval of both parties. Limited work line shall be installed and inspected prior to site disturbance and may include adjusting the limit of work to protect root systems of trees onto the premises.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Tony.
What is the definition of a mature tree? A four-inch caliper, six-inch caliper, ten-inch caliper, is there, I mean, and what is proximate to lot lines? Two, two feet, one foot, three feet?
All right, so typically with trees, so any, any tree that's on the lot line or passes the lot line is considered jointly owned. When you talk about activity that you can do with a tree, it's typically looked at the drip line of the tree is where you would look at to minimize root disturbance. You know, we haven't specified that a tree caliper three point five can be cut and four can't.
Well, it's going to come up in other decisions.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's probably getting pretty excessively finite if you're coming down to that. I mean, we're just really trying to impress upon people that if there's a mature tree that is on or proximate to the lot line, that you make best efforts to maintain that.
That is, it remains undefined. It remains, it remains up to the developer to do that and not what we might want to do.
Right, but you also don't want to say, okay, there's, you know, there, we're going to cut this tree because it's what, a hair smaller than another? I mean, the intent is that you have developers who are essentially clearing to the law. So this is, this is an attempt to have some buffer there and provide some coverage for abutters because these trees that are on or very close to or on top of the lot line, if you've got a long property, you're not going to be able to mark every single spot along that lot line.
I don't mean to belabor, I don't mean to belabor this, but this is going to come up, this is going to come up again, and I want to try and be consistent. I think this board should be consistent. Should we be saying, shall maintain a mature tree line of two feet, three feet, four feet? What is the definition? A mature tree that is a, an oak, and a mature tree that is some kind of maple, and I'm not a, you know, I'm not a.
Arborist.
Arborist, thank you. So I don't know what is a mature tree and what is not a mature tree. And that's why I'm trying to find a definition, because I think that people have a right in these massive subdivision, not subdivisions, but developments to have some kind of buffer that is meaningful so that a developer doesn't just clear cut, because that's exactly what, well, could happen.
So what I would recommend is for the future, that the board consider some depth, and perhaps that would be a minimum of five feet from a lot line, where you say, okay, I want your no disturb line to be five feet stepped in from the lot line so that we understand that whatever vegetation is in that area is going to be kept, right?
Yes.
But here, you don't have that luxury.
We don't.
Correct. So what we're trying to identify to people is that these trees that are on the lot line or pass over the lot line are going to be maintained to the extent possible.
Well, I'm just bringing it up, it's up to the rest of the board.
Well, no, and I agree with, I think that Lorraine's suggestion is good. I think we, I think a lot of it should come, we should be looking at some of these trees during a site walk, during the lot line, to say, I mean, there's a three-hundred-year-old oak tree, say, uh-uh, you're not touching that.
Yeah.
Versus uprooting some scrub pine. I think the board should just say, all right, what do we need for buffering? And I would, I agree with that, say that five feet, ten feet, whatever is the better way to do it, rather than splitting hairs about.
How fat tree is.
That, you know, we're not going to be there when these things come down, saying, all right, we put a ten-foot buffer no disturb line, and you've cut to the tree line, that's very easy to say, you've violated your permit.
I just wanted to give a little, little protection to the abutters.
Of course.
Did we, did we mean that yet?
No, we did not.
I'll move S ten.
I'll second.
All those in favor of S ten? I oppose, none.
No, I oppose that one.
What's that?
I oppose it.
You oppose it?
But it doesn't matter because you put everybody else.
Okay.
Right.
It's just going off the path.
I know, I'm sorry.
The applicant shall confirm the proposed mailbox location with the United States Postal Service.
I'll move S eleven.
I'll second.
All those in favor of S eleven?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, got a look at Tony now.
Continue the tradition.
So now Jim's going to take over and do B.
Prior to building permit, B one, the applicant is required to provide, one, regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants for ownership, project two, an affordable housing deed rider specifying that affordable units shall remain in, shall remain affordable in perpetuity, three, a declaration of trust for the homeowners association, and four, condominium, condominium documents, including master deed and rules and regulations. These collective documents shall be provided to the zoning board of appeals for review by town council prior to the issuance of any building permit and subsequently recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. A recorded copy shall be filed with the zoning board of appeals and the town's housing coordinator. The applicant as a limited dividend organization is limited in its profits under mass general law chapter forty B, and any excess profits shall be paid by the applicant and distributed as equally by the subsidizing agency and in accordance with the applicable law, regulations, and guidelines.
I'll move B one.
Second.
All those in favor of B one? I oppose, none.
B two, the fire hydrant shall be revised from the location shown on sheet five of eleven of the August eighth, twenty twenty-four plans, northwesterly area to the easterly side of the premises, approximate to Acapescot Road, substantially as indicated on the October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four email from Craig O'Malley, Falmouth Fire Department, and shall be shown on revised site plan.
I'll move B two.
Second.
All those in favor of B two? I oppose, none.
B three, the developer shall comply with all water superintendent requirements, including installation of specific water mains and a hydrant at the easterly end of the development hydrant location, also required to be approved by the fire department and shown on the site plan. The applicant shall provide an easement for the water main extension in a form approved by the town. Tap and sleeve assembly shall be inspected, including pressure testing, chlorinated, and sampling. The developer shall provide an as-built. Could have been worse. As-built to the water superintendent upon completion. Costs related to the easement and provision of water service and metering shall be borne by the developer.
I'll move B three.
Second.
All those in favor of B three? I oppose, none.
B four, the water line construction shall be in accordance with the town's water department. Water department fees and requirements shall be the responsibility of the developer. Prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall conduct a hydrant flow test to determine available flow and pressure to fight a fire and provide the results to the water superintendent and fire chief. Procedure for flushing, disinfecting, and pressure testing of the water main shall be approved by the town's water superintendent.
I'll move B four.
Second.
All those in favor of B four?
Aye.
I oppose, none.
B five, a certified plot plan stamped by a licensed surveyor shall be provided to the zoning board of appeals, engineering, and inspection engineer for review and approval prior to the application for a building permit. At a minimum, the plan shall show the following: lot dimensions, driveway limits of pavement, limits of sidewalk, building locations, dimensioned, let me go off my place, dimension, building footprints matching architectural plan dimensions, closest distance to nearest property line from each building, locations of drainage structures, including limitations of infiltration areas, hydrant location, fencing, sight lighting, and limits of work, which shall also be demarcated in the field. This plan shall serve as a base for an as-built plan of the project upon completion.
I have a slight amendment to that with help from town engineering. They had a couple of added items, so I guess the easiest way for me to add this in would be if you're looking at the fourth line after the words driveway limits of pavement. So now some of this will be duplicative of what was already in there, so I've sort of merged engineering's words into ours, but, so the corrected language will be after driveway limits of pavement, parking stall locations and dimensions, limits of sidewalk, building locations, dimensioned, building footprints matching the architectural plan dimensions, closest distance to the nearest property line from each building, locations of drainage structures, including limits of infiltration areas, hydrant location, stormwater pipe location, and invert elevations, drainage structure, rim, and invert elevations, depth, width, and length of stone infiltration beds, including roof infiltration areas, fencing, sight lighting, and the limits of work, which shall also be demarcated in the field. And then it continues, this plan shall serve as the base for an as-built plan of the project upon completion.
All those, um.
I'll move to.
I'll move B five as amended.
Second.
Sorry. All those in favor of B five as amended?
Aye.
I oppose.
Prior to.
You're going to keep going? Yeah, go for it.
Prior to, unless you've already signed something.
No. Well, let's go to the waivers.
Prior to occupancy permit, oh one, engineering anticipates that the address for the development will be eighty-seven Acapescot Road, addressing as assigned by an engineering, shall be properly posted in compliance with section ninety-nine dash one. A fixing of legible numbers required prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
I'll move oh one.
Second.
All those in favor of oh one?
Aye.
I oppose, none.
Oh two, the final lottery agent, lottery plan, and marketing plan shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals and the housing coordinator prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
I'll move oh two.
Second.
All those in favor of oh two?
Aye.
I oppose, none.
Oh three, landscaping shall be installed as presented in accordance with the landscape plan, site planting plan, sheet L one, revision dated July third, twenty twenty-four, and typical building planting plan, sheet L one point one, dated May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, prepared by Hock Design Incorporated, Sagamore, Massachusetts, with all plant materials maintained in good health. Invasive vegetation shall be removed. Any material substantially diseased or dead shall be removed and replaced with similar-sized plants within two years of the final certificate of occupancy. Landscaping shall not impede site distance at Acapescot Road. All landscaping, including the play area, shall be maintained in perpetuity by the condominium association or successors. The fencing shall be installed minimally, as shown on the landscape plan, and shall be added to the site plan. Condominium documents shall contain language regarding the requirement to maintain the fencing in good working order in perpetuity.
I'll move oh three.
Second.
All those in favor of oh three?
Aye.
I oppose, none.
Oh four, the final certificate of occupancy shall not be issued until all required site work, including landscaping, drainage, or other improvements are completed. The developer shall request the inspection engineer to issue an email to the zoning board of appeals confirming completion and compliance with all requirements under their oversight. The developer may request that the Z B A consider a bond to the value of incomplete work to ensure that work is completed in accordance with plans.
I'll move oh four.
Second.
All those in favor of oh four? I oppose, none.
Oh five, any damage to Acapescot Road during the construction process shall be repaired to town standards at the expense of the applicant.
I'll move oh five.
Second.
All those in favor of oh five?
Aye.
I oppose, none.
Oh six, prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall enter into a monitoring agreement to be reviewed by town council. All costs associated with the monitoring shall be borne by the applicant until the sale of the last affordable unit and thereafter by the sellers of the affordable units. Copy of all financial information by the monitoring agent shall be provided to the zoning board of appeals and the housing coordinator after the initial round of sales.
I'll move oh six.
Second.
All those in favor of oh six? All those in favor of O six? Aye, opposed, none?
O seven, the three affordable units shall be designated as 1A, 4A, and 6B as shown on the record plan. Addresses shall be properly posted as assigned by engineering prior to a final certificate of occupancy. One affordable unit must be completed per three market rate units. A certificate of occupancy for the final market rate unit may not be issued until all affordable units have been completed and granted a certificate of occupancy. All dwellings shall have the same exterior appearance and construction quality and be in conformance with the approved plans.
I'll move O seven.
Second.
All those in favor of O seven? Aye, opposed, none?
O eight, a certified as-built plan shall be submitted to the ZBA engineering and the inspection engineer for review for conformance to the approved plans prior to a certificate of occupancy. Plans shall be an overlay of a plan described in condition number B five. Any deviations from the approved plan shall be clearly shown in red line over the base plan, which should be faded back for clarity. The as-built shall be certified by both the licensed surveyor and registered engineer that work was performed in conformance of the approved plans on all permits. The designated inspection engineer shall review and approve this plan and confirm that the plan includes the required information and certificates. No certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the as-built plan is approved by the board.
I'll move O eight.
Second.
All those in favor of O eight? Aye, opposed, none?
O nine, the applicant shall provide an ADA-compliant sidewalk across the street frontage and along the interior driveway. Sidewalks shall have tactile strips where the driveway intersects Ekapeska Road.
I'll move O nine.
Second.
All those in favor of O nine? Aye, opposed, none?
O 10, the landscape architect shall review compliance with the approved landscaping plan and shall issue a letter to the board certifying that the landscaping was installed in accordance with the approved plans prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the final unit.
I'll move O 10.
Second.
All those in favor of O 10? Aye, opposed, none?
O 11, dark sky compliant lighting shall be provided at dwelling doorways in addition to the four development pole lights distributed along the driveway per revised plans. Spotlights are prohibited, this shall be included in the condominium documents.
I'll move O 11.
Second, this one also.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed, none?
O 12, the interior sidewalk shall be installed per plans and maintained in perpetuity by the condominium association.
I'll move O 12.
Second it.
All those in favor of O 12? Aye, opposed, none? All right, Scott, you're at bat.
Waivers, W one, any waiver not specifically granted herein is denied.
Second, moving.
Moving W one, I'll second. There you go. You can second it. Although, oh, all those in favor of W one? Aye, opposed, none?
W two, Article V, 240-19A of the zoning bylaw allows one single-family home per lot. The applicant requested a waiver from the requirement to allow construction of six duplex buildings, 12 units on the property.
Move it, second.
All those in favor of W two? Aye, opposed, none?
W three, Article XIV, 240-69 of the zoning bylaw limits the maximum lot coverage for structures, paving, and parking to no more than 40%. The applicant requested a waiver from this requirement that would allow up to 49% lot coverage for structures, paving, and parking.
Move it, second.
All those in favor of W three? Aye, opposed, none?
W four, Article XXI, 240-99, Costa Pond Overlay District. The site is located in the Green Pond Overlay District. The applicant requested that the board find that the proposed Title V system is adequate and appropriate for the proposed development. The property has less than five lots and is less than five acres and is located in a stabilization area. The Board of Health will require review and approval of the Title V system prior to installation. The town plans to extend sewer along the Ekapeska Road in about five or six years. The site is designated with a sewer manhole approximately 50 feet off of Ekapeska Road to allow for easy connection should sewer become available in the future and is mandatory for an advanced treatment. The applicant reported that the installation of the AI system now would be cost prohibitive.
Move it.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Tony.
You know how I feel about this, and I want to understand what this means. Are we approving this because we know that in five or six years that there's going to be a sewer line coming down that way? Are we approving this because the proposed Title V system is adequate, as proposed? We have no, are there any findings to that fact? No?
No.
We've been informed the sewer is planned to go down Ekapeska Road as the second phase of the current project which is going on in the Ekapeska T-Ticket area.
My, the other...
That's a plan.
But I recall testimony, not specific to the hearing, but when Scott McGann was before us, said that there may be properties where a traditional Title V is appropriate, given that sewer is coming in a somewhat contemporaneous period.
Well, I think...
If it's still standard, anything under 10 years, I would suggest might be contemporaneous, but and that was, that's one of the only reasons I'm, would be willing to go away coastal pond. Only because the testimony was that the sewer is coming.
I think the other item I'll point out to the board is that you cannot override the Board of Health, like nothing that you write. And so if in two weeks from now, the Board of Health determines that everybody has to put in an IA, or that if you're exceeding whatever you have to put in IA in, they will have to comply with that. So what they've told you to date is that they can, they've left room for an IA, they've left the ability to connect to sewer. And so, but what they're telling you is, as of today, they're only planning to do a Title V system.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of, did we, did we?
We didn't vote it yet, but it was...
Did you motion it?
I motioned and you seconded.
In a second, okay. All those in favor of W four?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none?
W five, Article XIV-240-66D stipulates that there shall be only one dwelling per lot. The applicant requested a waiver from this requirement to allow construction of six duplex buildings, 12 units on the property.
Move it, second.
All those in favor of W five? Aye, opposed, none?
W six, Article XXII-I-I-E requires the developer to reduce the impact where possible for removal of trees with four-inch trunk diameters. The site design, including location of buildings, driveways, walkways, and gratings are such that most, if not all, trees except those on property lines will be cleared. The applicant requested a waiver from this requirement indicating that the landscape plan allows for new plantings of trees and shrubs.
Move it.
Second, Tony? Want to address this?
I would like to address this, I'd like to ask a question. This is waiving this, but earlier on, Juan and I opposed wrongfully because I was even excluding mature trees from it, which I should not have done. But in any event, I did. But what, we said one thing in S 10, and now we're waiving something over here. Am I incorrect in that with regard to trees?
But this is interior as well as prop, as well as trees on the border.
Right, so what I would tell you is that your other condition makes best efforts to protect trees that are on the property line, and it directs the developer that if a tree is on a, is shared over a property line, that they can't touch it without permission from the other property owner.
So there's not a conflict between S 10 and W six?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay, I just bring it up.
Did we move, did I move that? Did you move it?
I'll move it again.
I'll second. All those in favor of W six? Aye, opposed, none?
W seven, Article XXIV-240-17, the applicant requested a procedural waiver to the peer review suggestion that the planning board review is required. There is a planning board referral on file.
Move it, second.
All those in favor of W seven? Aye, opposed, none? Yay.
So now you go back to the middle of the decision where you actually, page seven, for the actual votes.
Want me to read it?
Yep, near the chair.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals herein referred to as the board, being of the opinion at fore said and acting under the provisions of Mass General Law 40B, Section 20 to 23, and 76 CMR 56.00, following a motion made by, Jim?
I'll move it.
Jim, and seconded by Frank, voted to grant a...
I'll put it in afterwards.
I'll put it in afterwards. Voted to grant a comprehensive permit with conditions under MGL 40B, Section 2023, for the construction of six ownership duplex dwellings, 10 of which shall be two-bedroom units, one of which will be a one-bedroom unit and one of which will be a three-bedroom unit. Three units, all two bedrooms, shall be affordable in perpetuity to households whose income is not more than 80% of the area median income as determined by HUD and OHLC at zero Ekapeska and zero Old Bayberry Lane, East Falmouth, Mass, assesses map 33, Section 09, parcel 003, lots 398 and 520, collectively quotations of premises. The comprehensive permit shall be subject to the following conditions. So now we vote.
Is this a roll call vote?
Yes, I believe it is.
Sure. Why not? All those in favor? Mark Finnerin?
Finnerin, aye.
Scott Peterson?
I'm not a voting member, right, on this one?
No. Frank Duffy?
Aye.
Murphy, aye?
Morse, aye.
Good catch.
Petrucci, aye.
There we go.
How about that, huh?
Thank you. It was easy.
Next time the applicant has to read all of these, right?
Yeah, we're going to make you read them next time, Nick, yeah. He can read Brick Hill, yeah. Careful drive. All right, let's move along. Have a good one. All right, minutes. We've got enough of them here, huh? The first two. We're doing October 10 and October 17?
Uh, yes.
Make a motion to do October 10 and October 17?
Second.
Everybody's all set with these? October 10 and 17? All those in favor? Aye? And now, Norrie?
I will tell you, after completing this comprehensive permit, I have nothing to add.
You did a great job.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
I don't think we should absorb anymore.
No. For a discussion? Jim's back. Future agenda items? Well, and our next meeting will be held on November 21 at 6:00 PM.
I just have a question.
Go for it.
The 21st, I have to bring someone to an appointment. If I'm actually late, how does that work? Am I out of everything or just the ones I missed?
What are we doing on November 21?
You're going to miss one if you file that statement under the...
No, you can come into other hearings, I mean, it's up to you, but you can come into other hearings.
Just trying to think of what we have.
Oh, so I'd be, yeah, the Mullen rule would apply anyway, right?
We just have the usual cases that night. You do have a couple of continuances. But, you know, there are also enough people to vote. So I guess if you...
Deep Melrose and...
Can join us whenever works.
I imagine I'll be back on time, but...
If I threw it out to the chairman, the other thing is if there's a hearing that you really want to participate on, I would just say something out of the chair and take things out of order, or we could do the open meeting if it's just going to be 15 or 20 minutes.
No, it's not that, I just, I've, I've never missed in the two-plus years I've been here in it.
Drive fast, take chances.
That's normal.
All right, Mark, I really need you right now.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Aye, adjourn.